Okay, Jeff, you can start recording. Good afternoon. This is a review session of the New York City Planning Commission for Monday, March 11, 2019. The time is 1:03. The first item on our agenda, page 83, is a certification of a zoning map amendment in Brooklyn Community District 5. Our presenter is Alexandra Patty Diaz.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Limelt Petroleum, Inc. proposes a zoning map amendment to establish a C-24 commercial overlay to facilitate a new one-story commercial building in Brooklyn. The project area is in East New York, Community District 5 of Brooklyn. The rezoning area consists of three contiguous tax lots, Block 4151, Lots 154 and 107, located on the northern side of Atlantic Avenue between Grant and Nicholas Avenues. The tax lots have a combined area of approximately 24,000 square feet. The development site is located at 3513 Atlantic Avenue, which is on the north side of the Atlantic Avenue. The proposed rezoning area and surrounding blocks are within a large R5 zoning district. Within the R5, to the north of the rezoning area, there are C-12 and C-22 commercial overlays along Fulton Street. C-24 commercial overlays were mapped in the East New York rezoning, within an R5 zoning district and a new R7A zoning district, on several lots on Atlantic Avenue to the west of the proposed rezoning area. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of low-density residential uses, including two-story row houses, detached and semi-detached homes, and mixed-use buildings with residential and ground-floor commercial uses. Commercial uses are concentrated along Atlantic Avenue, a major east-west commercial corridor through Brooklyn and Queens, and Fulton Street, one block to the north. As mentioned before, the project area is close to the East New York rezoning area, two blocks east of it, as well as one block west of the border between the boroughs of Brooklyn and Queens. The site is close to public transportation. Crescent Street J subway station is located four blocks northwest of the project site. Local bus services within the area includes Q24 bus. Lot 1 is approximately 4,600-square-foot corner lot, located in the intersection between Atlantic and Nicholas Avenues. It has approximately 101 feet of frontage on Atlantic Avenue. It is improved with a small one-story building occupied by an automobile sales business and an open sales lot. Lot 54, the proposed development site, is located in the intersection between Atlantic Avenue and Grant Avenue. It is improved with two outboarding one-story buildings occupied by a gas station and a convenience store. Lot 107 is a 625-square-foot vacant on improved interior lot that has no street frontage. This is a street view of the development site. The proposed development is a new one-story commercial building that will be divided to accommodate two separate retail stores. One space will have an entrance from Atlantic Avenue and Grant Avenue, and the other will have an entrance on Grant Avenue. The proposed development will have approximately 98 hundred square feet of commercial floor area and six unenclosed accessory parking spaces. The one-story building will rise to a height of 19 feet. The proposed development will have two 12-foot corncuts to provide access to and from the parking area. One corncut will be located on Atlantic Avenue and another one in the intersection with in Grant Avenue. The proposed development will have an enclosed loading berth. The action necessary to facilitate the proposed development is a zoning map amendment to establish a C-24 overlay in the existing R5 zoning district. I'm open to answer any questions.
Question, excuse me, questions from the Commissioner? Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. Where are the nearest C-24 overlays?
I will go back to my area map.
Sorry if I missed it.
No, it's, this one, we can see it. The nearest one is in what we see as R7A, to one block west of the project site, on the northern side, and then it goes to the south side of Atlantic, along Atlantic Avenue. They were mapped part of the East New York rezoning.
Got it, thank you.
I'll also note that we did not suggest extending it across the intervening block because it is very solidly developed as residential. Commissioner Ramperchad.
I have a question. In regards to the curb cut that's less than 50 feet from the corner, has DOT weighed in on that?
Not.
The one that's on Atlantic Avenue, sorry.
On Atlantic Avenue? Not to my knowledge, but what I can share with you is that the existing, there is a very wide existing corncut that gives entrance to the gas station, and the proposed development is minimizing the area of the corncut in the sidewalk while also providing, is going to provide a better sidewalk condition for the pedestrian experience.
And just one last thing. They forgot a utility poll on Grant Avenue. That's right after the street light, so just let the applicant know.
Okay.
Based on the photographs that they had provided, that's all.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
The second item on the agenda, page 103, is a certification of a special permit and referral of an authorization in Manhattan Community District 5. Our presenter is Ezra Moser. I believe Commissioner Cirillo is recused on this.
All right, good afternoon. So, my name is Ezra Moser. I'm the planner for Community District 5 in Manhattan Borough Office, and I'm here to present One Penn Plaza. So, this is an application by One Penn LLC, which is an subsidiary of Vornado Realty Trust, for a special permit to reduce plaza area for which a bonus has been granted and utilized, and a CPC authorization to close two of the plazas on the zoning lot overnight. The applicant has also requested chair certs to effectuate design changes to two plazas on the zoning lot, as well as a cert to place two food kiosks within two of the plazas. As I'll be discussing, the requested actions will facilitate a suite of design upgrades to multiple plazas on the zoning lot. So, to situate ourselves, it's located in a block bounded by West 34th Street to the north, West 33rd Street to the south, 8th Avenue to the west, and 7th Avenue to the east. It's kind of difficult to see the project area boundaries because there is a lot of red on this map, but this is the subject block and project area. It's directly north of the Penn Station and MSG complex. It's a cater corner to the Farley Post Office Building and future Moynihan Station. It's about one avenue east of the beginning of the Special Hudson Yards District. It's just about a block south of the southerly end of the Special Garment Center District, and it's an avenue west of Herald Square, which you can see at the bottom corner of the map. As you can also surmise from the preponderance of red, it is a high-density commercial area, and the site itself is split between a C-64 zoning district and a C-66 zoning district, all within the Special Midtown District. One Penn Plaza is a 1.8 million square foot, 57-story office building complex that occupies the full block and was built in 1972. The zoning lot contains two one-story retail pavilions located on 7th Avenue and 8th Avenues, and as you'll notice, there is a small carve-out here, Lot 48, which is a Long Island Railroad and Penn Station entrance. The main One Penn Office Tower occupies the mid-portion of the block. So, this here shows the building footprint, as well as the plaza areas. The original One Penn building was developed with about 50,095 square feet of plaza area and 3,800 square feet of arcade area. This generated about 312,000 square feet of bonus floor area, and these plazas were built under the 1961 Plaza Regulations, so they were built before the current POP standards were in place. Anyhow, as noted, the applicant is requesting a series of actions in connection with the redesign of the plaza areas on this zoning lot and in connection with the overall repositioning of the building. So, here are a couple shots that are going to orient you because it's a block that a lot of us have traversed many times, but doesn't always come to mind because the major office tower itself is set in the mid-block portion. So, this is 34th Street and 8th Avenue, looking east. You can see the Empire State Building in the background. The 8th Avenue retail pavilion is visible in the foreground, and then the main office tower is rising above it in the mid-block. You can see Madison Square Garden over the shoulder of the site, looking southeast. So, this is when you continue around to 33rd Street. So, I guess, let me just rephrase. If you were to continue south along 8th Avenue and then turn left onto 33rd Street and continue to look east, you'd see the main office tower here, located mid-block, and then you can see one of the plaza areas just to the left in the foreground. If you were to continue down West 33rd Street to 7th Avenue and turn around, looking west, you would see this view. So, this is at 7th Avenue and 33rd Street, looking west. You can see Hudson Yards in the background here. And so, this is a 7th Avenue retail pavilion, which is also one-story, and then you can see the main office tower rising mid-block with two portions of it that are set back. If you were to continue up 7th Avenue and then take a left onto 34th Street and walk mid-block, you'd see this view. Now, this is kind of turning around and looking over your shoulder to the southeast. You see MSG in the background here, the main office tower in the foreground, and again, for a little bit further orientation, you can see the Empire State Building. So, this is east-southeast. This is the same plaza area right here as well in the foreground that you saw from the opposite view on 33rd Street. So, for a little bit further orientation, this depicts a site plan, and it's anchored by the office tower in the middle, and then contains roughly six distinct plaza areas. The first, which is highlighted in yellow, is a large through-lot plaza that we call the West Plaza. It has two corner circulation portions on 8th Avenue. It is elevated and has a large outdoor café area and three food kiosks within it as well. We have a North Plaza and a South Plaza located on 34th Street and 33rd Street respectively, which provide access to the main commercial tower's office lobby through the northerly arcade and a southern arcade. There is a southwest plaza, which is cut off from the West Plaza and the South Plaza by an accessory loading dock entrance, as well as a ramp to a below-grade public parking garage. We also have a through-lot plaza called the East Plaza, which provides circulation between 33rd and 34th Street and is located towards the east of the site, near 7th Avenue. And then we have two small circulation plazas on 7th Avenue, which we essentially call the 7th Avenue Circulation Plazas. Again, I would note that this carved-out portion right here is where there is Long Island Railroad and Penn Station access. It does also provide ADA access to these concourses. And I guess I'd just briefly note as well that there is access to the subway facilities, as well as the concourse, from the northwest corner of the site here, just beyond the extent of the West Plaza. This does have an ADA access elevator right here. There's stair access out the southwesterly corner of the site, again, near the West Plaza, and then there are two stairs just adjacent to the 7th Avenue Circulation Plazas. There's also access to Penn Station from the West Plaza, which I'll show more on the next slide. So, this shows the existing conditions with a little bit more detail. And as you can see from, particularly on the North Plaza and the South Plaza, a lot of these are largely cut off from the street. There are a series of two-tiered planters along the 33rd Street and 34th Street street walls, which range roughly from three feet to five-and-a-half feet in height. And this is where the existing entrance to Penn Station is, off of the West Plaza. It's currently unmarked and primarily used by building tenants because the entrance is actually through a corridor to the lobby. So, briefly, under the special permit to reduce plaza and arcade area, the applicant proposes to reduce about 3,200 square feet of plaza area from the North Plaza, about 157 square feet total from the West Plaza to reflect built-out conditions, 21 square feet from the southwest Plaza to, again, reflect built-out conditions, and then the elimination of 1,900 square feet of the northern arcade, as well as 91 square feet of the southern arcade. The applicant also requests an overnight closure authorization under Section 37727 to close the West Plaza overnight, as well as the East Plaza overnight. So, these actions will help facilitate a suite of design upgrades, and in a couple slides, I'll be going through these very briefly on a plaza-by-plaza basis. So, this slide shows the site plan in the proposed conditions. And so, very generally, the applicant proposes to improve the plaza area's pedestrian access, their circulation, the visual transparency, and those to be achieved by removing obstructions at the street line. They propose to activate the spaces by providing a variety of new seating types and other user amenities. They propose new access point to Penn Station through the northern plaza, and they plan to improve all of the plaza area's paving material, color palette, lighting, and signage to comply with the plaza regulations of Section 3770. They're also introducing new food and beverage service via two kiosks pursuant to the chair certs, one in the West Plaza and one in the East Plaza. So, this slide quickly lays out which actions are going to effectuate the design changes, and as an FYI, I, you know, will return to this later, there's a lot of information here. So, the requested special permit requires that for any bonus plaza areas that are being reduced, the remaining open area must be upgraded to meet current plaza standards. So, the North Plaza, the West Plaza, and the Southwest Plaza are all requesting partial reductions, and therefore, the design changes to these plazas are proposed to be implemented by the special permit. The South Plaza and the East Plaza, however, are not requesting any reductions in their area, and so those design changes are planned to be effectuated by a chairperson cert, which is a typical route for implementing design changes to 1961 plazas. As I noted, there are two 7th Avenue circulation plazas. These are technically covered under the design change certification, but there are no changes proposed to these whatsoever. So, we're discussing the certifications as well because the applicant believes that the design improvements to multiple plazas, including the South Plaza and East Plaza, contribute to their meeting finding A of the special permit, which we'll also discuss more on later slides. So, here we have the North Plaza in its existing condition. As you can tell, it currently has no amenities, and it's largely cut off from the street by a series of raised planters. We have access from 124-foot, 9-inch stair and 17-foot, 4-inch stair. So, even though there's an appearance of ample green space, it kind of acts effectively as a green barrier. So, as I mentioned briefly before I showed the proposed conditions, the applicant does propose to eliminate the arcade and a portion of the North Plaza, and this will allow them to extend the building's lobby northwards towards 34th Street. They're removing floor area within the second and third floors of the building to ensure that there's no floor area noncompliance created by this action. And actually, really briefly, before I continue, I do want to note that, in total, all of the reductions to plaza areas on the zoning lot constitute about a 6% to 7% reduction in total plaza area. So, it appears to be slightly more of the North Plaza, but when taken at the zoning lot level, it's a 6% to 7% decrease. So, here are the proposed conditions following their series of upgrades. The applicant is widening the stairs and reducing planter area to improve pedestrian access. They're installing a new ADA-accessible ramp at the westerly end of the plaza. They're adding bench seating and movable tables and chairs and a rotating artwork space to add some verticality to the space. They're adding five new trees where none exist currently, and they're improving the materials, color palette, and bringing the signage and lighting into compliance with the plaza regs. They're also, as I mentioned, adding a new, very clearly visible access to Penn Station, which is visible to 34th Street. So, I'm about to show you several slides of the existing conditions and then several renderings showing the proposed, it's a comparison. So, this shows the North Plaza when you're looking straight on from 34th Street. As you can see, this is a two-tiered planter, which largely obscures a view into the plaza. This is really among the lower, lowest of the planter areas that cut off some of the plazas from the street. So, this is in, you know, one of the better-case scenarios. This shows a view from inside the plaza, and as noted, there are currently no amenities within the space. So, this is a view of the plaza from 34th Street in the before conditions, and then here it is in the proposed conditions. Here is a view a little closer up in the before conditions or the current conditions, then here you see it in the proposed conditions. You can also see the Penn Station entrance here, towards the right of the screen. This is the same view from within the plaza, identifying that there are currently no amenities, and then here's how it will appear in the proposed conditions. I want to note that what you can see here at the far end of the plaza is the lobby extension. It's about a 3,000-square-foot enlargement, and it will be pulled out to about 15 feet short of 34th Street in order to improve visibility into the space when you're walking westward along 34th Street. Here's another existing conditions view, viewing the arcade, and then, under the proposed conditions, provides a little bit better of a close-up of the lobby, as well as the art space. So, this is the West Plaza existing site plan. As I noted, it's located between the one-story, sorry, retail pavilion on 8th Avenue and then the main office building's westerly extension in the lobby, and is also framed by two entrances to the below-grade parking garage. It's primarily a raised through-lot plaza with a large vest pocket minor portion, and the minor portion and the major portion are connected by an elevated platform area with about, with several sculptural seating areas. The minor portion's raised around three feet above the major portion. The 33rd Street entrance is about, sorry, one second, the 33rd, the 33rd Street portion is about three feet, sorry, the 34th Street portion is about three feet above sidewalk level, and the 33rd Street portion is about four foot nine inches above sidewalk level. So, they're quite raised, and you can currently, as I noted, access Penn Station through the lobby here, but it is currently unmarked. So, the West Plaza was redesigned in 2010 under a design change certification and currently has trees, planter areas, and a variety of seating types. However, the applicant contends that the raised nature of the plaza and its varied topography make it somewhat illegible and disconnect from the street. The layout also creates a slightly meandering desire line, which further discourages through block circulation. So, partly as a result of this condition, the applicant has cited that the spaces pose a series of ongoing safety concerns. So, before I show the proposed conditions, I just want to note quickly that the applicant's proposing to reduce about 157 square feet total of plaza area on the West Plaza, and this is to reflect portions of the building that were actually approved by DOB and built out into approved plaza area. Also, because they're requesting this reduction of plaza area, this would mean the design changes, which I'm about to walk through, are going to be effectuated and controlled by the special permit. So, this shows the proposed conditions. The applicant proposes a series of upgrades to improve the visual connection between 34th and 33rd Street and to improve circulation between these two streets. They're also providing a variety of new amenities to activate the space. By extension, their aim is to improve the space's perceived sense of safety for users. So, they propose to eliminate that central platform area that acted as a bridge between the major and minor portion, instead provide widened stair access between the two. By doing this, they'll also provide a more clearly defined circulation path between 34th and 33rd Streets. They are redesigning the space with a series of linearly distributed elbow-shaped wooden benches, which are going to be interspersed with a variety of movable tables and chairs, as well as two new above-grade planters. They're also providing a sculptural lighting trail, so it's going to run from, you know, north to south, and this is going to help improve and reinforce visual connectivity between the plazas and two streets, and will create a clearly defined central linear spine. The applicant is also proposing to place a new food kiosk in the northerly end of the West Plaza, which is intended to activate the space and invite users into it from the street. Overall, the amount of seating and planting area will increase, and the lighting and public space signage will be brought into compliance. Also, the existing Penn Station entrance through this lobby portion of the building will receive new signage to clearly indicate that it's providing mass transit access. So, I'm about to walk you through a series of existing conditions and proposed renderings. So, this is an existing poorly rendered bird's-eye view of the space, and here is what it'll look like in the proposed conditions. This is existing conditions from 33rd Street, looking north across the plaza, and I think it kind of accentuates the fact that the amenities and elevation make it somewhat difficult to see into the space and across it. And then, here's what it'll look like in the proposed conditions. This is from within the plaza, still looking north, and again, the variety of amenities and obstructions kind of obscure the site path to 34th Street. Here it is in the proposed conditions. This is the existing conditions, looking south towards 33rd Street, and again, in the proposed conditions. This is one of the corner circulation areas. This one is on 8th Avenue and 34th Street. So, here's existing conditions. It has a above-grade circular planter with a single tree in it, and the proposed conditions are going to be integrating bench seating into that raised planter. So, this is within the West Plaza, looking at the, sorry, the minor portion of it, which again is raised above the major portions area. And in the proposed conditions, as I noted, they're eliminating that raised central area, and this is the variety of amenities that you'd see interspersed along that north-south spine. They also are planning to periodically hold public, non-ticketed events in the plaza in order to further activate the space, and the applicant is also applying for a nighttime closure of the West Plaza, citing a variety of documented safety concerns that are included in the statement of findings in your briefing packets. This really briefly shows the proposed closure conditions. They'd be using stanchions in either a metal or rope, you know, chain to close the area off at night. So, this depicts a southwest plaza in its existing conditions. Like the North Plaza, it's elevated well above sidewalk level and mostly cut off by two very large, two-tiered planters. These actually range at their tallest between five feet and 5'8" above street level. Access is provided through a 7-foot, 4-inch stairway. There is also an existing attendant booth for the accessory loading dock, which the applicant believes is integral to their building's efficient functioning. It was built out into approved plaza area, so they're planning to reduce the 21.25 square feet that's located underneath it in order to bring the plaza into compliance. This is southwest plaza in its proposed conditions. You see, they're adding bench seating, as well as movable tables and chairs. They're actually increasing the amount of planter area and distributing it further north to south to open up the plaza, providing a 22-foot, 6-inch stairway. Here's the plaza in its existing conditions, and here's what it would look like in the proposed conditions. I'd also note, before I move on, that because they are proposing to reduce plaza area, the design changes to this plaza are also going to be effectuated by the special permit. This is the South Plaza in its existing conditions. So, let me see. As you can see, it does suffer from, again, a lot of the same issues as does the southwest plaza and the North Plaza in particular, that's cut off from the street by very large two-tiered planters. And these are elevated well above curb level, has limited access to the sidewalk, and there are currently no amenities in the space. They are also proposing to reduce 91 square feet of the southerly arcade area, which is actually reflecting a built-out condition. It appears that the exterior of the lobby wall was built about one foot into approved arcade area, so this reduction will bring this arcade into compliance. arcade area so this reduction will bring this arcade into compliance. So in the proposed conditions, they, like with the North Plaza, they're opening it up dramatically. They're providing four new widened staircases as well as new ADA access along the easterly edge of the Plaza. They're adding four trees along the westerly edge to create a well-defined space here. They're adding a variety of seating including bench seating and movable tables and chairs and again, where no amenities currently exist today. And they are improving the lighting, materials, and signage, bringing the former and latter of those into compliance with the Plaza regulations. So here is a view of it in its current condition. Here is a view in the proposed condition. This is a view from within the Plaza, kind of highlighting the amenity-less aspect of it. And here is that same view in the proposed conditions, especially with the addition of the four new trees at its westerly edge. So lastly, I'm going to take you through the East Plaza. In its current condition, it provides ample through-lot circulation between 34th and 33rd Street. Currently has several clusters of movable tables and chairs, two of which are located on raised wooden platforms. And then it has two above-ground planters at the northern and southern edge with a single tree in each. In the proposed conditions, it'll receive increased planter area. It'll keep the two trees just distributed in different locations and it'll increase the amount of seating and provide one new food kiosk in the center via the chairperson Also with this Plaza, the applicant proposes to periodically hold publicly-available, non-ticketed events and this Plaza is also seeking a nighttime closure authorization pursuant to Section 37727. And I would note that the applicant proposes to close this Plaza for fewer hours overnight because it serves as a very critical circulation space for commuters in the morning. So now I'm going to show existing conditions slide. Here you can see those raised wooden platforms on which some of the movable tables and chairs sit. This is how it would appear in the proposed conditions. You can see the kiosk located in the middle of the, hold on, sorry. There we go. In the middle of the Plaza area and then here's a detailed close-up of the kiosk. Again, it's applying for nighttime closure authorization. It would utilize the same design for the closure mechanism as the West Plaza. So as noted, the applicant's requesting a special permit to reduce Plaza and arcade areas for which a bonus was granted and utilized, an authorization to close two of the Plazas overnight, and then two chairperson certifications to effectuate design changes to two of the Plazas on the zoning lot as well as place two kiosks within the West and the East Plaza. We're returning to this slide again which just again highlights which Plazas are effectuated by which actions. The North Plaza, the West Plaza, and the Southwest Plaza all because they're requesting Plaza area reductions. Their design changes are controlled by the special permit and implemented by a special permit. And then the Southern Plaza, or the South Plaza, sorry, and the East Plaza are having their design changes implemented by the chair cert for design changes. As I also noted, there are closures requested for the West Plaza and for the East Plaza. So these are the findings for the two requested actions. For the special permit to reduce Plaza area, the commission may permit the reduction of an existing publicly-accessible open area or arcade for which a bonus has been utilized provided that it does not create a new floor area non-compliance on the zoning lot, that the reduction and elimination is adequately compensated by the substitution of another public amenity improvement on the zoning lot that provides equal or increased public benefit, and that for the publicly-accessible open areas, any remaining bonus area will comply with the Plaza standards of 3770 to the maximum extent feasible. I would also note that for the special permit, the applicant will remove 6,989 square feet of zoning floor area from the building to ensure that it does not create a floor area And as I noted, the finding A of the special permit requires that the elimination or reduction of public space is adequately compensated by the substitution of another public amenity. The applicant believes that the provision of the new Penn Station entrance and the design changes to multiple public spaces will allow this finding to be met. Finding B requires that any remaining open area will comply with the Plaza regulations to the maximum extent feasible which affects the proposed design changes to those three Plazas that I highlighted earlier. For the authorization for nighttime closure, the commission may authorize the closing during certain nighttime hours of a new or existing publicly-accessible open area if they find that the closure is necessary for public safety, that operational or safety issues have been documented, the layout and design promote public use and easy pedestrian circulation, and that specific design requirements outlined in the text are met. And it also requires that public access to the space be maintained between the hours of 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM during the spring and summer months and then from between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM during late fall and winter. Any questions?
Thank you for presenting a lot of information so clearly, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you Ezra. On this question of increased public benefit, do you know approximately what the value of the new transit entrance to Penn Station would be?
Monetary value, I do not know, but we can have the applicant provide that if you'd like.
Other questions? Commissioner Madin.
Ezra, thank you for the presentation. I do have a question and it doesn't relate to the Plazas. It relates to one of the renderings, I'm going to pick page 66 and 67 for a moment, of your presentation. And you're saying that there's no FAR being added. I just wanted to take a look for a minute at the retail portion where you have the old and new and it's apparent that there are going to be some changes to the building as well. I see that there's sort of like a mezzanine there that's been opened as the spandrel to the building has been removed. So is that space that's already existing that's going to be reused and repurposed and now is given life by getting light into the building?
That's correct. There are a series of second-floor enlargements and in some cases, they're actually knocking out the divider between the first floor and the second floor to make double-height spaces. But they're providing in both the retail pavilion and the main office tower a series of amenity spaces for tenants which are mainly going to be located on those floors.
Thank you.
Commissioner Delauz.
Ezra, first, thanks for going through that in such detailed fashion. That was amazing how a relatively small area can have so many details and so many different parts of our zoning resolution that apply to it. You know, because, I guess I take very seriously the idea of closing public areas and, you know, I understand that in the Statement of Findings, there's a whole list of reasons why the applicant believes that is appropriate. I guess it would be helpful to know what other interventions they have tried to employ to try to address those concerns, to know whether or not closing publicly-accessible areas is the right next step. You know, in particular, you know, security cameras, other security that they've had, you know, contact with the treatment facilities that are adjacent to try to address the concerns, you know, coordination with homeless outreach programs. Those kinds of things would be helpful to understand as part of, I'm assuming they've probably done many of those things, but I think it would be helpful to understand what they've done because, you know, A to Z without understanding the in-between might be skipping a step.
No, it's a good question. I believe they've done all the above and I can get back to you on the extent of their outreach with the local care providers in the area as well as homeless outreach. My understanding is that they still continue to have security observing the space. They do have the security cameras and I think that, from my understanding, the closure is more to be able to give nighttime security more, the greater ability to control the space because, as they list in the Statement of Findings, currently maintenance staff are often threatened by nighttime detizens and they have to use special biohazard gloves to clean up the space in the morning and it's, you know, creating a lot of issues from a maintenance perspective. But I will get more details on the extent of their global coordination.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Thanks.
Commissioner Levin.
And related to that, I know there have been a lot of news stories about the challenges that are faced on 33rd Street which has been closed to traffic and I think also has some of these same things happening. So when it comes back, we can get sort of the big picture of the security issues in the neighborhood. That would help us put these in context. I actually had a different question and that's about the Penn Station, the new Penn Station entrance which looks like a terrific idea. Is that a bonus situation? Are they getting any kind of a bonus for, or did they for, train station access?
No, they did not. They did not receive one. They're not receiving a bonus for it other than that it's contributing to the findings for the reduction.
Okay. And admittedly so, it's a big improvement. Is there, you mentioned the ADA access elevator at the corner, in the sidewalk in the corner. Are there any other improvements being made to the entrance itself besides figuring out how to get there from 34th Street?
The new entrance?
Yes.
So the new entrance will not be ADA accessible and, hold on one second. The applicant has tried pretty extensively to make that proposed entrance ADA accessible. They've worked with the state and Amtrak and they say that basically all the options that they studied would need to go through space that's currently occupied by MTA and Long Island Railroad for critical station operations as well as large portions of Penn Station police team and their K-9 unit. And they noted that currently there are two ADA points of access to Penn Station. Here, I'll pull up the overall site plan. Sorry for the volume of slides here. Hold on. Almost there. So there's currently ADA access provided at 34th Street and 8th Avenue and then 34th Street towards 7th Avenue at the main LAR and Amtrak entrance. So the applicant does say as well that they've been working with both the state and Amtrak to increase ADA access to Penn Station because they're property owners of several in the area and the state does have plans for a new entrance in the portion of 33rd Street that's been closed. They refer to it as Plaza 33 near 7th Avenue which would put new ADA access through the retail stores on the north side of 33rd Street. But there are not a lot of specifics yet because that's going through a lot of negotiations with the state and Amtrak. They're also working with Amtrak on the main Penn Station entrance that most people think of over by Two Penn Plaza which is a block south and their aim is to provide ADA access there as well where there currently is none.
Okay, so this one then off of 34th Street is really just going to be a new doorway through that portion of the building that gets you to the top of the stairs that already exist?
That's correct.
Are they making any improvements in those stairs or?
They are not. They're not making improvements. They said that it was structurally cost-prohibitive and would interrupt the functioning of...
But they're just making it easier to get there?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And also signage to let people know it's there.
That's part of making these exits.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. I guess I wanted to also chime in on Commissioner Delauz's concerns about the nighttime closure. I'm curious, right now, there is no nighttime closure.
That's correct.
Correct. So this is why we have an incident report like this. And your nighttime closures, is that a permanent authorization?
Yes.
Okay. So, because one of the questions I have is if we are in fact activating this space, will we see fewer incidents because, you know, we're encouraging activity and they have food at night? I mean, this continues to be a public access between, you know, 34th Street and Penn Station and Madison Square Garden which presumably is a very 24-hour area. So, you know, to the extent that, I guess the permanence of it is a concern for me. I understand why they might want to do it now, but the conditions will change. And I don't know what, whether there's a tool or mechanism to, you know, have them come back. And I'm also curious, given that, you know, what we're giving up and what they got for the Plazas, if there are any sustainability features that they would like to point out here in the Plaza. You know, there's lighting that's going on, you know, to the extent that that played into the design, I would be interested in knowing.
From a cosmetic perspective, they're doing considerable greening of the sides of the West Plaza, for example. They're putting in a series of vine screening. They're repositioning some of the planter areas and the trees and they're making it aesthetically more inviting and kind of more coherently landscaped. And as I noted, they're adding a number of trees to the North Plaza, the South Plaza, and a tree to the Southwest Plaza. I guess from the perspective of sustainable building features, there's nothing within the Plazas that I know of.
There may be construction practices or, you know, there's a whole slew of thought that could have gone into that and as long as we're here, we should, you know, encourage that.
I can ask the applicant if, in the course of repositioning the building, if they're going to be implementing any energy-saving or sustainability-oriented measures.
And materials, that kind of thing. One clarification on the signage, this will all be Plaza-approved signage so there's, because I wonder the extent to which, being able to indicate to a lot of visitors who are here new for the first time that this is in fact a pass-through and maybe, you know, gets you to 34th Street or 33rd Street, you know, if there's signage or an opportunity for signage that indicates what's on the other side because there is no real visual because of the elevation. Even though the light will do something for that.
They're putting in a plethora of new signs and a lot of them are going to be located at where the Plazas meet the street. So I don't have any slides currently indicating the details of them, but they're adding eight new signs to the West Plaza area and again, most of them are located in areas like here, 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 here. They're adding two new ones to the North Plaza at similar locations, here and I believe They are adding one new sign, again, where the Plaza meets the street at the Southwest Plaza.
But those signs just indicate that it's a public Plaza?
That's correct. That it's public.
So no directional or wayfinding signage?
That's correct. There's no wayfinding signage other than the Penn Station entrance signage which indicates, you know, access to Penn Station.
I think it would be helpful to consider, given the number of visitors who are not particularly familiar with this area, you know, it might allow them to use this more comfortably.
That's a good point.
So, thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
I have a follow-up question. Actually, I just created two questions. We're talking about the West Plaza. So I take it that this was a landing site for development rights off of Moynihan Station?
That's correct.
I take it that's not happening, at least not in the lifetime of these Plazas?
So the timeframe for the landing of that, according to the applicant, is unknown. It could be happening, you know, in the kind of indefinite future. It could be happening in the next five years. It's not been...
Okay, but unknown enough so that they're proposing to go ahead with something else?
With these redesigns.
In the time being?
That's correct.
Okay. So my real question was about, to know a little bit more about the floor area removal that they're undertaking, is it all, I guess I have two questions. Is it all out of the lobby on the 34th Street side?
I have an appendix slide which shows the general areas where they're removing area. I apologize, it's at the very end of this very long slideshow. So they're removing them from the second and third floor. Some of the area is indeed from portions of the current lobby where they're knocking out the slabs where, like, as an example, actually here, this is an interesting place to stop. You can see the Southern Arcade in its existing conditions. It's about 16 feet high. Then in the proposed conditions, it's going to be 30 feet high so some of that removal is from area that was formerly here. They're doing the same thing on the North Arcade. All right, hold on. Nighttime closures, floor area removal. So this highlights generally where they're removing floor area from. Some is coming from the third floor and then a good amount is coming from the second floor, some of which is above the current arcade areas.
I guess my question is, which came first? The floor area removal and then they figured they could compensate with the Plaza improvements or the Plaza improvements? You know, are they doing this because they need to make up space or are they doing this because it's going to make better spaces? Or are they doing this because it's going to make better spaces inside the building?
My understanding is the latter. I mean, it's really part of a overhaul and repositioning of the building. Again, the majority of these spaces haven't been improved ever and have no amenities. And they saw the reductions as necessary. And so in order to make that compliant, they have to remove floor area from within. So the removal, even though it does work out well with creating a double-height space for some of the arcades, it's...
I just wanted to add, you, you may have seen and heard from the applicant that they're, they're taking a comprehensive view of the area, making investments in the building and in the public spaces around the building, including, of course, the 33rd Street Pilot Program, which they did a few summers ago. So it really is part of a comprehensive look at, at the properties and adjoining public properties.
Right, because they do own the property directly south to Penn Plaza, and they're doing a very major and attractive repositioning of that building as well.
Thank you. Could you go back to the West Plaza?
Mm-hmm, proposed condition to existing.
The proposed.
Okay, hold on one second. Almost there.
There we are. An attractive feature is the ADA accessibility off of 34th Street.
Yep.
But when this comes back, I would ask the applicant about why they weren't able to make it ADA accessible on 33rd Street so that you could traverse the entire plaza.
So you noted correctly that the, on the north side, they have a switchback ADA ramp, which goes up about three feet to meet the plaza at plaza level. And they note that on the south side of the plaza at 33rd Street, the height of the plaza is four foot, 10 inches above sidewalk. And they believe that there is no space to do this at grade. They say that it's cost prohibitive and structurally infeasible to cut a ramp into the south-side planter areas due to the presence of the garage immediately below grade. But we will have them, you know, provide further information on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
Great, thank you.
Just a reminder that the POPS logo competition is still ongoing, and those signs would appear at this plaza. Third item on our agenda, page 184, is a pre-hearing review of a disposition of city-owned property in Manhattan Community District 2. Our presenter is Sylvia Lee. I'll note that Commissioner Marin is recused.
Good afternoon. This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, returning for hearing on Wednesday. During referral period, HP revised the land use application within scope to only seek disposition of a city-owned property. The action will facilitate the development of an affordable senior housing building with ground-for-retail office space for nonprofit organizations, as well as publicly accessible open space. The site is in the Little Italy neighborhood of Manhattan Community District 2. Specifically, the site is an approximately 20,000 square feet through lot with frontages on Mott and Elizabeth Streets between Spring and Prince Streets. Immediately south of the site is a seven-story, 151-unit residential building built by Little Italy Restoration Association. The rest of the surrounding area, a well-known shopping and dining district, as well as residential, generally consists of four-to-seven-story mixed-use buildings with ground-for-retail and residential above, which are primarily old-law tenements. Several public open spaces are within the immediate vicinity, including the De Salvio Playground, located one block south and west of the project site, and the Christie Street Medium, three blocks east of the site. The site is located within the special Little Italy District with a C-62 underlying zoning. Preservation Area A, the sub-area within which the project site is located, carries special controls on use, bulk streetscape, and landscaping. The proposed development complies with all existing zoning regulations. A brief reminder on the history of the site. The city historically owned the project site as part of a larger zoning lot. The southern portion of the larger lot was conveyed to Little Italy Restoration Association, as I mentioned earlier, to build the 151-unit building in 1981. In 1991, the city leased the project site to a neighboring property owner for storage of sculpture and any other as the right uses on a month-to-month basis. It was used as a private sculpture garden until recently. In the past several years, the space has been used intermittently as a community green space. In 2013, the project site was identified as a future affordable housing site. In 2016, HPD issued an RFP to develop affordable housing for seniors and publicly accessible open space. In 2017, the development team was selected by HPD. Penrose is the lead developer. Riseborough and Habitat for Humanity are co-developers. Habitat for Humanity will also have office space within the proposed project. The proposed development would be a seven-story mixed-use elevator building with approximately 123 affordable studios for seniors, one unit for super, ground-for-retail, office space for nonprofits, and approximately 6,700 square feet of publicly accessible, accessible open space, which is about one-third of the site area. Other amenities include an exercise room, bike storage, a multipurpose lounge room, and laundry would be provided on each floor. The building would also have two green roofs, providing additional open space and activity space for building occupants, one on the second floor, one on top of the building. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant, HPD, seeks disposition of city-owned property. The application was certified on November 13th, 2018, and referred out for public review. Manhattan Community Board 2, with 30 in favor, seven opposed, and forced abstaining, adopted resolution to disapprove the project. Manhattan Borough President issued recommendation to approve the project with the conditions listed on the slide related to massing, open space design, management, as well as affordability. I'll let my colleagues at HPD address some of these conditions and their responses in detail on Wednesday, but I'm happy to go through some of it if the commission would like. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions? Vice Chair Knuckles.
Community, Community Board 2 speaks frequently of this alternative site that they proposed at 388 Hudson Street. What is the status of that site at this moment?
My understanding is, so that is a site north of the special Hudson Square District, so currently owned by DEP. My understanding, DEP, yeah. And it's one of the few water tunnel shaft sites in Manhattan. And there is some critical infrastructure below grade. My understanding is HPD's response has been that they've been in conversation with DEP to explore the site as well as a potential affordable housing site, but those discussions are ongoing, and there is no resolution in terms of the future of the site.
Okay, a quick follow-up. Also in the, the board's resolution, it talks about the history of, of the site. I'm just curious, was there ever an edifice on, on, on the site at all? Or has it always been an open space?
Well, the city has owned the site for a long time, as you can see. And it was really just leased to the private property owner next door on a month-to-month...
I'm sorry Sylvia, the question is whether there had been a structure on the site earlier on in its history?
My understanding is no, but HPD would be happy to speak to that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Delo's.
Kind of just following along Vice Chair Knuckles' points, I think it would be helpful, I'm assuming somebody from HPD is going to be here on Wednesday. It'd be helpful, I mean, in the community board's resolution, they, they indicate that the, the remaining portion of the site after some school buildings were torn down, were supposed to be exclusively for recreational use. It'd be helpful to know, like, where that was noted, like, you know, has HPD done any research into that? Are they concerned about any potential legal challenge into this disposition that might indicate that this is contrary to what the original intention was? Like, that kind of a thing would be helpful for HPD to address at the hearing.
Got it.
Other questions? Thank you. This will go to a public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The fourth item on the agenda, page 215, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning text amendment in Manhattan Community District 5. Our presenter is Scott Williamson. Commissioner Sivilo is recused on this item.
Good afternoon. So this is an application by JP Morgan Chase Bank for a zoning text amendment that relates to 270 Park Avenue. The referred and amended application's proposed to create an alternate design option for public spaces required by the Greater East Midtown Framework. The site is located in the East Midtown neighborhood of Community District 5. So the site at 270 Park Avenue is shown with the red dash line. It is bounded by East 48th Street to the north, Park Avenue to the east, East 47th Street to the south, and Madison Avenue to the west. The site is located in the heart of Manhattan's Midtown Central Business District in an area characterized by tall, high-density commercial office buildings. Consistent with the surrounding area, the site is presently occupied by a commercial building accommodating retailer ground floor and offices above the site, sorry, the building has a street wall along Madison Avenue and a plaza along Park Avenue. So the site has an area of 80,000 square feet. The zoning resolution has, has several requirements for public spaces on sites over 65,000 square feet in area, including being located on the through lot, which is shown here in green. It should also be open to the sky and be a minimum of 10,000 square feet in area. The through lot location offers two configuration types for the public space, which are dashed here in blue and red. So shown here in green is what the mid-block public space option might look like on the 270 Park Avenue site. The applicant indicated that this public space configuration would require the building to be designed with irregular floor plates that are undesirable for a contemporary Class A office building. To alleviate this issue, the referred application proposed allowing the public space to be located along Madison Avenue, where it could be co-located with the MTA entrance shown in yellow, which is outside the through lot portion of the site. So this alternative location is now shown here in, sorry, shown here in green is what the mid-block public space option might look like at 270 Park Avenue. Then we progress to the alternate location that is shown here in blue. To account for the consistent street wall on Madison Avenue, the proposed, the referred proposed text amendment required the space to be enclosed. Sorry, so the red, the, sorry, in red is the Metro North Train Shed, which occupies a substantial amount of the site's subgrade. Shown in orange along 48th Street and centrally, a subgrade cores that must be situated on solid ground to service the building, including a loading dock and freight elevator core. In response to these constraints, the proposed text amendment, as referred, sought to allow the relocated and enclosed public space to have an area of 7,000 square feet, which is shown here in blue. So we've just discussed points one through three here, which summarize the referred text amendment. In addition, the referred text amendment would allow a kiosk to activate the space in lieu of retail continuity requirements, permit the use of the space for events, allow a variety of seating types to create, to cater to different users, and require the space's walls to be used for the display of art and plantings. So the, the application was referred to Community Board 5 and the Manhattan Borough President. The Community Board voted to disapprove the application. The recommendation requested that the public space be at least 10,000 square feet, or that a substantial public benefit should be provided to compensate for the loss of public space. The Manhattan Borough President recommended disapproval with conditions. Those conditions included, the space should be at least 10,000 square feet and at the same grade as the sidewalk. Of that 10,000 square feet, at least 30% should be open to the sky. Pedestrian thoroughfare should not count towards the 10,000 square feet. And the final design should be subject to the approval of the Public Realm Improvement Fund governing group. Additional comments included, any outdoor, any indoor space should provide public restrooms. The restroom should be open the same hours as the public space. The kiosk should have Madison Avenue street frontage to provide retail continuity. And a significant contribution is required to be made to transport infrastructure, given the transit impacts of the proposed building. Examples identified by the, by the Borough President of transit improvements included, new staircase and elevator entrances to a railmass transit facility within the proposed building, or alternatively, the applicant's adjacent building at 383 Madison Avenue, or another location in East Midtown. Otherwise, improvements could be made to the pedestrian corridor that connects the proposed building to Grand Central Terminal, or a contribution or in-kind repair to the Grand Central Train Shed beyond what is necessary for the construction of the proposed building, or an MTA substation to be constructed as part of the proposed building to provide the power for additional train service in conjunction with MTA's installation of communications-based train control on the Lexington Avenue line, which will reduce commute times and overcrowding on the line. So I should clarify here that while the Borough President's recommendation suggests that there are transit impacts, there weren't any identified as a result of the environmental assessment statement. So following the Community Board and Borough President recommendations, the applicant has progressed the design and amended its application, which I'll step through now. So as with the referred application, the amended application proposes to relocate the public space to Madison Avenue, where the space can be co-located with the MTA entrance, shown here in yellow. That relocated space is now shown here in green on Madison Avenue. A key difference to the initial proposal is that the amended proposal requires the space to be unenclosed, which is more aligned with the existing zoning text. This would, however, require the existing street wall continuity regulations along Madison Avenue to be waived. So as with the referred application, the, the location of loading docks and freight elevators affect the configuration of how the public space can be designed. So in response, the public space, which is now shown here in green, is arranged around those site constraints. The space achieves 10,000 square feet by occupying the full Madison Avenue frontage and wrapping around onto a portion of 47th Street. This configuration requires additional flexibility in the existing requirements for plaza dimensions. The dashed purple line, sorry, blue line here, over the new building's loading dock and freight elevators that are shown in orange provides a point of reference for the plaza depth that would be required under the existing regulations. Also, as shown here in the, in plan and section in orange, the building can partially cantilever over the public space as long as no more than 60% of the space is covered. The cantilever must be at least 40 feet above the space and have an average of 50 feet, as shown in the section. This configuration allows more sunlight into the space while also enabling a more optimal floor plate above. So we've just discussed the first four points in this list that summarizes the text amendment. In addition, the amended proposal would allow a kiosk to activate the space in lieu of retail continuity requirements, allow for flexibility in how seating and permitted obstructions, such as planters, are laid out along the Madison Avenue street frontage. And it would also allow for additional design flexibility related to difficulties associated with the MTA entrance. And it would do this via the mechanism of a chair certification. So both the referred and amended applications would be limited to sites that are 80,000 square foot or more in size, and include an existing railmass transit facility outside the through lot portion of the site. The ES did not identify any other sites other than 270 Park Avenue that this criteria would satisfy. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
This is Madison Avenue, right here?
That's the corner of Madison and 47.
Questions? Commissioner Delo's.
Does the amended proposal have any public restrooms?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Commissioner Levin.
Has the revised proposal been reviewed by Community Board 5 or the Borough President's office?
Yes, it was referred to both a couple of weeks back. We haven't received comments on them, from them, on the amended proposal.
Okay, and they're, but they're aware that the hearing is happening on...
Certainly.
Wednesday? One would hope, okay. How does this, how does this plaza relate to the building entrance? I think one of the concerns with the enclosed space is it really, you, its qualities as public space, we're going to be overwhelmed by the entrance to an office building. So I'd be interested in knowing a little more about how the entrance will be configured with respect to this unenclosed space.
So the design, I would have to leave the applicant to speak further to. However, the primary entry for the building is on Park Avenue. They're, you know, intending for that to be a high-volume entry space, and that's why they've separated it out. Their main entry will be Park Avenue, and this will be the space on Madison Avenue, which will have a connection to the building, but it will be a far more minor one, which would have to happen in between those, those two orange cores that, that sort of take up most of that, that frontage. So they're intending for some connection between the two, but certainly not the high-volume connection that Park Avenue needs.
I appreciate that they've had some real challenges in dealing with this site and the... site and the significant train infrastructure that's below, and that there's a lot of planning that probably still has to happen before they really know what they're building. But I have to say, these images are, have significantly less detail than we usually see on an application of this sort. So, if they could flesh in a little bit more detail at the ground level to indicate how the buildings will meet the public space and the sidewalks on both sides of the building, because my next question is, what are they planning on the Park Avenue frontage? I know there has been, at one point, some suggestion about using that as public open space, but all of those buildings, whether they do or not, all of the buildings along Park Avenue have paid particular attention to the way that the building meets the broader sidewalk there. What's going on there? Is that, that's not open space?
We don't have any design detail for that portion of it. This has been focused on the text amendment that relates to Madison Avenue. So, they may be in a position to talk to you some more about it.
Okay, and then I have the same flavor of questions about the entrance to Grand Central that will be part of this, the little yellow oblong that's shown there, and then how it relates to the building across the street, the building to the south, is that 383? Does that have a bonus thing inside it? There is an entrance to Grand Central inside that building, which is owned by the same applicant, and how do those access points relate to each other if they do?
Sorry, to step in for just, I came up to answer one of your earlier questions, but I can answer your 383 Madison question as well, actually. 383 Madison was created with the Grand Central Subdistrict Special Permit in 2000, and it does have a privately-owned public space at the ground floor, L-shaped corridor. It was not a bonus, per se, it was a requirement through the special permit. The building achieved a 21.6 FAR through transferring development rights from Grand Central Terminal. It was the one and only building that used that special permit.
That ever did that.
Yes, that's right.
That's pretty grand space, but it has zero in it, absolutely nothing. I mean, you could play hockey in there, you could think of a lot of, a lot of good active uses. And then through the barricade, after you've passed security, there's a tremendous lounge with a great TV and all sorts of stuff happening, but there is zero in that public space.
The quirk of the requirement, the zoning requirement for that space was that it was supposed to be a clear passage space to allow for free and open circulation.
It's a clear path.
And, yeah, it's a clear path. I think, well, the applicant may, is actually thinking about some ideas of how to further activate it for the public, but that's not before us today.
Okay, yeah, no, our business here is about this entrance and how it might.
Yes, so, actually, I wanted to address your earlier question, because you pointed out that the graphics you're seeing and that what the information you have in your packet is significantly less detailed than what the Commission normally sees, and that is correct, because this application is for a text amendment, in which the CPC actually would never be approving building permits or even a privately-owned public space design plan as part of this action. I do want to remind the Commission that there will be a future action submitted by the property owner for certification of the pop space, but the action before you today is for a text amendment in which there are no building drawings being approved.
Just for the process.
Correct, yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Deloos.
I recognize that the applicant decided to turn the corner on East 47th Street to try to address the concerns from the Community Board and the Borough President. I'm just wondering, though, if they could describe more what the plans are for the space, make sure it's not just an afterthought.
Certainly, I guess at the moment, the primary intention of the text amendment is to reach the 10,000 square feet, and then we come back with the chair certification for the layout of the public space, which is down the track, and I suspect they may not have that design yet, but they will be able to tell you what they do have at the moment.
Especially since it's, you know, behind the entrance there, I think it's going to, it's going to be disjointed if they don't get some thought to it.
Other questions? Then, we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The fifth item on our agenda, page 243, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning text amendment in Manhattan, Community District 4. Our presenter is Annie White. Commissioner Sivilo is recused on this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application for a text amendment for a property located at 66 Hudson Boulevard in Hudson Yards, Manhattan, Community District 4, back for its pre-hearing review. The applicant for this project is a subsidiary of Tishman Spire. The text amendment is to modify certain requirements related to ground floor and mandatory improvements in Subarea A2 of the Large-Scale Plan Subdistrict A of the Special Hudson Yards District. The text amendment will facilitate the development of a 65-story Class A commercial office building with ground floor retail. So, you can see the development site in the context of Hudson Yards on the map on the left. The full block site is indicated by the red square. It is between West 34th and West 35th Street and between 10th Avenue and Hudson Boulevard East. The site is in Subarea A2, which is the densest subarea in the district with a maximum FAR of 33. It's directly adjacent to the seven-train entrance, Block 2, of Hudson Boulevard and Park, the park that was recently renamed the Bella Absa Park after the activist and New York Congresswoman. It is directly adjacent to the seven-train entrance and just north of the Eastern Rail Yards and east of the Javits Center. The proposed development, which you can see some images of on the right, is known as 66 Hudson Boulevard or the Spiral. It's an approximately 2.2 million-square-foot Class A office building with ground floor retail. The ground floor of the proposed development would provide two main lobbies, one on 10th Avenue and one on Hudson Boulevard East, and there will be an additional as-of-right lobby on West 34th Street. The proposed text amendment is modifying ground floor and mandatory street scape improvements requirements in Subarea A2, and it addresses two primary issues: lobby width limitations and street tree requirements. So, to begin with the lobby width requirements, the current Special Hudson Yards District zoning requires that lobbies along certain streets comply with the Type 2 lobby provisions, which limit the width of lobby entrances to 25% of the street wall with, the street wall width of the building, or 40 feet, whichever is less. The street walls along Hudson Boulevard East and 10th Avenue are approximately 197 feet, therefore, the lobbies on these street frontages are limited to 40 feet. The proposal will modify the maximum permitted lobby width on Hudson Boulevard East and 10th Avenue to increase their width from 40 to 70. So, the plan you're seeing here is the current as-of-right 40-foot limitation, and the proposal is to allow the lobby widths to increase to 70 feet. This proposal limits the applicability of this text to developments having 2 million square feet or floor area or more and in a certain geographic area, which does limit the applicability to the 66 Hudson Boulevard site. The applicant believes the expanded lobby is more appropriate to the scale of the development and will greatly improve the circulation and while still keeping, retaining the strong retail character along the frontages. Here's a rendering of the building looking east down West 34th Street, and you can see that lobby entrance on Hudson Boulevard East facing Block 2 of the park. The second thing that the text amendment addresses is street tree requirements. The current zoning requires additional street trees to be planted along the entire length of the zoning lot, where a mandatory sidewalk widening is required. Three of the street frontages of 66 Hudson Boulevard require the sidewalk widening, 34th Street, 35th Street, and Hudson Boulevard East. This is in addition to the underlying basic street tree planting requirements of Hudson Yards, so you can see that along these frontages, it creates a double-tree alley. What you can see from the sections on the right is that, except on West 34th Street, the urban condition of this double-tree alley is, you know, inappropriate, there's only a six-foot tree-to-tree width, and the proposed text clarifies that the additional street trees would only be provided along West 34th Street, where the alley creates a desirable urban condition with a 13-foot tree-to-tree distance and the extended sidewalk widening along the building. And this plan just shows you where that, the new street tree requirements, where that would be the 34th Street alley. So, in its public review, at its full board meeting on February 6, Manhattan Community Board 4 adopted a resolution recommending approval of the application, with 31 in favor, one opposed, and one president not eligible. Then, on February 25, the Manhattan Borough President submitted a letter recommending approval of the application. And happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, to a public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The sixth item on our agenda, page 260, is a pre-hearing on a notice of intent to acquire office space in Queens, Community District 7. Our presenter is Nolan Gray.
Good afternoon. This is a notice of intent by the New York City Department of Citywide Services and the Taxi and Llamazin Commission pursuant to Section 195 of the New York City Charter to acquire 60,000 square feet of office space at 3189 123rd Street, College Point, Queens, Community District 7. The Taxi and Llamazin Commission is seeking a temporary office space to house its enforcement division while their offices at Woodside undergo renovation. Applicants for the same purpose at different locations, excuse me, applications for the same purpose at different locations were approved by the CPC in August 2017 and March 2018. The proposals failed after CPC review, in the first case owing to breakdown of the agreement with the landlord, and the second case owing to city council concerns about traffic. The proposed office space is within the Special College Point District, created in 2009 to facilitate business park development in a way that mitigated impact on nearby residential. It's located in an M2-1 zone, which permits medium industry at a floor-area ratio of The office space is located along 123rd Street, just off of 31st Avenue, near the intersection of College Point Boulevard and Whitestone, and the Whitestone Expressway, or I-678. Nearby transit includes an MTA bus stop, the Q-65, along College Point Boulevard, right at the intersection with 31st Avenue. Approximately a mile to the southeast is the termination point of the seven-train in downtown Flushing, as well as the Long Island Railroad Station. The TLC intends to run a shuttle from this station to the office space, which would coincide with the shifts of employees. Nearby development is a mixture of corporate business parks, big-box retail, municipal agency operations, and open industrial uses. Some of the municipal agency operations include the North Shore Marine Transfer to the northwest of the site, the NYPD tow lot, the New York Police Academy, and the New York State DMV office. The proposed office space includes 60,000 square feet of floor area spread across two floors and along with structured parking in the basement and a surface lot around the perimeter of the site. The Taxi and Llamazin Commission will be the sole tenant of this building. The office would host the Commission's enforcement division, which includes approximately 353 staff members in shifts and the storage of 100 patrol vehicles. DCAST has indicated that this site is well-suited for this purpose, as tenant improvements would be minimal. This location will not host clients or visitors, other than staff attending training sessions at the facility. Thank you, and look forward to your questions.
Let's turn knuckles.
What kind of rehabilitation is going to take five years for the?
My understanding is the Woodside facility needs structural repairs and some soil work.
It's a long time. Given the occupancy, proposed occupancy of the entire building, and you probably can't answer this, but I certainly want to ask DCAST, are they looking at this site as a possible acquisition?
Not to my knowledge. I believe that their plan is to return to the original Woodside facility after the five-year timeframe.
Or shouldn't they look, is what I should have said.
Yeah, that's a good question.
As a plausible acquisition. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, we'll see this again at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The seventh item on our agenda, page 270, is a pre-hearing on a notice of intent to acquire office space in Brooklyn, Community District 2. Our presenter is Sanmati Niak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a notice of intent by New York City's Administration for Children's Services and DCAST pursuant to Section 195 of the New York City Charter to acquire 140,000 square feet of office space at 12 Metro Tech in Brooklyn's Community District 2. The proposed office space is within Brooklyn's Special Downtown Brooklyn District, which was rezoned in 2004, and is predominantly a mix of commercial and office buildings, including institutions of higher learning courts and a variety of other community spaces. The ACF subway line is a block to the south of the site, and the 2, 3, 4, 5, and R lines' subway stops are all within four to five blocks of the site. 12 Metro Tech is a 30-story building at the intersection of J Street and Tech Place. The building has a corner entrance accessible from both streets. The floors 2 through 25 are owned by New York State Supreme Court and the Kings County Family Court. The upper five floors were built for commercial use and have a separate lobby and dedicated elevators. Currently, the floors are vacant. So, summarizing the project, the Division of Child Protection has six offices in Brooklyn comprising of West Zone, four offices, and East Zone, two offices, and the West Zone offices are proposed for relocation to the 12 Metro Tech on part of 26th floor and entire 27th, 28th, and 30th floors. The current distribution of offices limit collaboration opportunities, and many of the current spaces are outdated and not suited to ACS' needs. This consolidation of the four offices will allow the Division to work more efficiently and avoid duplication of services and space. The 12 Metro Tech location is ideal, because the Family Court is located in the same building. The Division has regular dealings with the Family Court, and the proximity will allow it to work more closely with the Family Court. Also, DCAST memo states that no other suitable properties within the incident tree were available. The business and the client hours will be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., with weekend hours between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. The services offered include counseling, family meetings, and supervised visits at ACS facilities, parent skills training, and substance abuse treatment, and ACS will be helping families by providing a food pantry and boutique. There will be a reception area, youth area, and a children's corner room, and everything will be on-site, and amenities will be on the same floor for security and efficiency. So, in summary, ACS is requesting an acquisition of approximately 140,000 square feet for consolidation of their four West Zone offices at 12 Metro Tech. Thank you. Take any questions?
Questions? Okay, we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The eighth item on our agenda, page 286, is a pre-hearing on acquisition actions for the CD3 sanitation garage in Brooklyn, Community District 1. Our presenter is Sayad Ahmed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. DSNY and DCAST filed two applications for the acquisition of two privately-owned properties for continued use as a CD3 sanitation garage. These applications were certified on December 3, 2018, and are back for public hearing. The properties are located at 525 Johnson Avenue and at 145 Randolph Street in the East Breamsburg section of Community District 1. The one-story garage building located at 525 Johnson Avenue is 35,828 square feet in area. The building accommodates offices, repair functions, and the storage of sanitation equipment. The building has been used by the Department of Sanitation as a garage since 1954. The associated parking lot at 145 Randolph Street is 39,835 square feet in area. The parking lot is paved, fenced, and well-lighted with a security gate on Randolph Street. The parking lot has 54 parking spaces for collection trucks and snow-removal equipment. The parking lot has been used by the Department of Sanitation since 1987. The garage is staffed with 119 personnel, and a total of 80 pieces of sanitation equipment are stored at this location. The garage is open 24 hours a day, Monday through Saturday. The garage building and the associated parking lot are located within an M31 Heavy Manufacturing District and is in the north Brooklyn IBC. The surrounding area is developed with food distributors, warehouses, private recycling processing centers, and municipal sanitation facilities, such as Varrick Street salt site, Brooklyn CD1, and Brooklyn CD4 sanitation garages. Community Board 1 held a public hearing on January 8. Community Board One held a public hearing on January 8, and disapproved both applications by a vote of 30 disapproving, six in favor, and zero abstentions. Community Board One, in their opposition, stated that the community board is overburdened with waste management facilities. In addition, the Flushing Avenue corridor is overburdened with traffic issues, and the additional truck traffic from this garage have negative impacts on the health of this community. Finally, the community board stated that the Department of Sanitation has not kept up with their promises, promises to relocate CD3 garage out of this district to Community District 3, which it serves. Borough President's Office approved both applications with the following recommendations: DSNY should seek timely completion of the new CD3 sanitation garage, so it will be ready by 2022 for the relocation of CD3 garage from CD1. Second, DSNY should coordinate with DEP parks, DOT, and local officials to construct rain gardens with the street tree pits. Finally, the Department of Sanitation should coordinate with DEP, DOT to construct curb extensions and protected painted sidewalk extensions where technically possible. Thank you. And DSNY and DCAST reps will be here on Wednesday to answer any questions the commission might have.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Syed. Has the, has construction on the new facility commenced?
No, they have awarded the construction contracts, and it is, this year it should commence, but it hasn't.
Secondly, do you know the proposed lease term for the sites in question now?
I don't, but DCAST and DSNY will be here on Wednesday to answer that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then we'll see this again at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The ninth item on our agenda, page 361, is a prehearing review of UDAP designation and disposition of city-owned property in Brooklyn, Community District 3. Our presenter is Anthony Grande.
This is an application by New York City Housing Preservation and Development for UDAP and disposition to facilitate the development of two new 100% affordable four-story apartment buildings with a total of 32 units in the Ocean Hill neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 16. The project area is located in the northwest portion of Community District 16. And the project area consists of two separate development sites in the same general area of the Ocean Hill neighborhood. Both sites are city-owned vacant lots proposed for new residential development by HPD. The Howard Avenue development site is an approximately 8,200-square-foot corner lot with frontage on Howard Avenue and Bergen Street. It's a city-owned vacant lot within the R6 zoning district. Surrounding residential built form is varied, with buildings ranging in height from two to seven stories, and the MTA C-Train Ralph Avenue Station can be accessed by, from this location by walking five blocks to the north on Howard Avenue. And this is a photo of the development site from the street level. And the proposed developments would be a new four-story residential building with a total of approximately 21,000 square feet and 23 units, which would all be affordable units. The building would rise to a height of 38 feet and contain a unit mix of one and two bedrooms. The building would be constructed pursuant to the Quality Housing Regulations in the R6 district. No parking would be provided, as this site is within the transit zone. Next, the East New York Avenue development site. This is an approximately 4,300-square-foot interior lot with frontage on East New York Avenue. Also vacant owns, vacant city-owned lot with, within the R6 district. The immediate vicinity of this development site is residential buildings at a height of four stories. In the surrounding area, more generally, building form is mixed, with buildings ranging from two stories to seven-story multifamily apartment buildings. The MTA 3-Train Sutter Rutland Avenue Station can be accessed from this location by walking five blocks to the southwest. And this is a photo of the development site from the street level. The proposed East New York Avenue development would be a four-story residential building with a total of approximately 10,000 square feet and 10 units, which would be all affordable. The building would rise to a height of 38 feet and contain a mix of one- and two-bedroom units. The building would be constructed pursuant to the Quality Housing Regulations within the R6 district, and no parking would be provided at the site, as it is also within the transit zone. In order to facilitate the proposed development, HPD requests an urban development action area designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property. This application was certified on December 3, 2018. Brooklyn Community Board 16 held a public hearing and voted on the application, 23 in favor, and one opposed and one abstaining, approving the application with no conditions. The Borough President recommendation is still to be received. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Thelos.
Do you have the AMI levels and the unit mix for these properties, these projects?
Yeah, HPD, they'll be speaking to that at the public hearing. I believe it's, the tentative program is for a range of 30% to 70% AMI.
And they'll have the unit mix information at the hearing as well?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, and related to that, the term of affordability, how long will these remain affordable?
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, yes, unrelated to that. You know, I noticed that there's ground-floor residential, and was wondering, and I see some other units have raised, first floors that are slightly raised to now enable a little bit of privacy for the ground-floor residents. If there's anything in the zoning resolution that prevents that from occurring, or is that strictly a design decision made by the developer and architect?
That prevents the building from being raised, the ground floor being raised?
Yes.
It would be allowed to be raised. I'm not sure what the design decision was exactly here, but I think the applicants can speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
More questions? Okay, we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Item 10 on our agenda, page 387, is a prehearing review of a site selection and acquisition in Staten Island, Community District 2. Our presenter is Hannah Peters.
Good afternoon. The New York Police Department and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services jointly seek a site selection and acquisition of private property at 1 Teleport Drive in the Bloomfield neighborhood of Staten Island, Community District 2. The proposed actions would facilitate the relocation of the NYPD's Staten Island Medical Division from their current space at 460 Brielle within the Sea View Campus to an approximately 14,000-square-foot space within the newly-constructed Corporate Commons 3 building. The application was certified on December 17, 2018, and is now returning for prehearing review. I'll walk through an abbreviated presentation. As a reminder, the project site is located on the west shore of Staten Island, within the Staten Island Industrial Park. The project site is accessible by several major highways, and is located east of the West Shore Expressway and south of the Staten Island Expressway. The project site consists of Block 2165, Lot 120, which is highlighted in red. The project site is bounded by South Avenue along the western boundary of the site, and Teleport Drive, which loops around the zoning lot with access to South Avenue. Corporate Commons 1 and 2, which contain office, medical office, and community facility uses, are located directly north of the site. As seen in the site plan, development of the site is currently underway to construct an eight-story, approximately 330,000-square-foot building known as Corporate Commons 3, which is proposed to contain school, office, and medical office uses. The NYPD Staten Island Medical Division seeks to site-select and acquire approximately 14,000 square feet of space in the southern portion of Corporate Commons 3 building in order to better meet the department's daily space and facility needs. The new space is proposed to have a larger waiting room to accommodate more patients, additional privacy screening, updated technology, and ADA-compliant access. The Staten Island Medical Division monitors the sick leave of officers and provides medical assistance in order to evaluate the nature of the illness, determine fitness for duty, and appropriateness of treatment. For this use, they require approximately 1,000 square feet of personnel space and approximately 13,000 square feet of operation space. The Staten Island Medical Division proposes to employ 16 people at the facility with hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. seven days a week, but will require site-access 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in case of emergency. The application was certified on December 17, and referred out to Community Board 2. CB2 held a community, held a public hearing on January 15, and by a vote of 24 in favor, zero against, and zero abstentions, recommended approval. The Staten Island Borough President also submitted a recommendation on January 16, recommending approval. Application is scheduled to appear at public hearing this Wednesday, where representatives of the NYPD will be present.
Questions? Thank you. We'll see it at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Item 11 on our agenda, page 411, is a prehearing review of a citywide zoning text amendment. Our presenter is Kiyoshi Yamazaki.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today I'm here to update you on the Residential Mechanical Void Text Amendment. So just to recap what we discussed about a month ago, so New York City zoning resolution currently allows mechanical floor spaces to be excluded from zoning floor area calculations, and there is no explicit height limit to those spaces. In recent years, some developments utilize excessively tall mechanical floors, so that upper, upper-story residential units are located above the surrounding context. That is commonly called as a mechanical void. Early 2018, Mayor DeBrazio asked DCP to examine the use of excessively large mechanical voids, and they'll provide a recommendation. DCP conducted a citywide analysis to identify where and when those excessive mechanical spaces are being used. Based on our research, we have identified or determined a typical tower configuration, as shown on the diagram. Mechanical space above the height of residential floor space used for taller buildings, additional mechanical floor or two in the middle, and the larger mechanical penthouse on the top. Anything that is not, any towers that is not conforming to that typical tower configuration is called being addressed as part of our proposal. So as shown in the diagram, to the left side, it's a mechanical space located at the lower section of the building. The middle diagram shows the mechanical space in the middle, and the last diagram shows the multiple mechanical floors that is clustered within a specific section of a building. We established our goals to limit the use of artificially tall mechanical spaces. We, we want to encourage residential buildings that engage with the surrounding context. At the same time, we would like to continue to, continue to make sure that reasonably-sized and distributed mechanical spaces in residential buildings to be accommodated. And finally, we want to continue to support the design flexibility of those flexible tower, residential tower districts. Our basic role is to modify the residential tower floor area provisions to require mechanical space that exceeds the height of 25 feet to be counted as zoning floor area. We are not, this proposal is not covering the mechanical penthouse located above the height of occupiable residential floor area. So in the diagram, which has 132 mechanical, 132 feet mechanical void in the lower section of the building, 132 will be divided by 25 feet, which is 5.28, and that number will be rounded to the nearest integer. The second part of the proposal is how we address the clustering of mechanical floors. So even if each mechanical floor is less than 25 feet, but if those mechanical spaces are located within, within a cross proximity, 75 feet in this proposal, there will be required to be counted as one contiguous mechanical space, and that total height of the mechanical space would be divided by the 25, which in this case has 80-foot clustered mechanical space, divided by 25 would be 3.2, and that would be rounded to the nearest integer of three. The final component of our proposal is to how we regulate mixed-use buildings. So our proposal would address residential mechanical spaces, and commercial and the community facility mechanical spaces are usually not covered by our proposal. However, if mixed-use building contains very limited amount of non-residential floor space, commercial or community facility spaces, mechanical spaces associated within, with those non-residential floor space would also be subject to our 25-foot, 75-foot mechanical space restriction. The, the slide here, just to describe why we came up with this 25% mixed-use building configuration rule. So the image to the right is a Mount Sinai Medical Campus residential community facility mixed-use building. The building contains several floors of medical research facility, and the portion highlighted in the red is a mechanical space. The bottom two-thirds of the mechanical space actually serves the lower-level medical space, which we know that they require very specific, you know, air controlling, which, you know, usually result in a larger mechanical space. Only the top one-third of the mechanical floor is being used by the upper-floor residential building portion. Therefore, that one-third, top one-third would be subject to our regulation. So this is just a summary of our proposal. We would modify residential tower floor area regulations to require mechanical space taller than 25 feet to count our zoning floor area. If those mechanical spaces are clustered within a cross proximity from each other, they will also be subject to our regulation for mixed-use buildings. If they, non-residential floor area occupies less than 25% of a building, mechanical space for, associated with those non-residential floors will also be subject to our proposal. So this diagram shows our expectation. So today, there are a few buildings that have utilized excessively large mechanical space. After our proposal, we anticipate mechanical space would conform to our 25-foot space rule. Finally, where those regulations would apply? Those regulations would apply to residential, well, non-contextual R10 and R9 residential districts, as well as their commercial equivalent districts. Some special districts that relies on the, the underlying citywide rule would also be subject to our regulation, which include Lincoln Square, Union Square, and those areas. Finally, we are including a limited number of central, well, limited number of special tower districts that is located in, just adjacent to central business districts. In this case, the northernmost part of West Chelsea and the southernmost part of Clinton Special District. So we referred out to 13 community boards and Manhattan Borough President for concurrent review, and as of today, we have received five approvals, two approvals with conditions, and three disapproval with condition recommendations. Manhattan Borough President recommend approval of their proposal with conditions. The typical conditions are summarized in this table. The typical conditions are summarized in this table. So several community boards requested us to lower the height threshold of 25 feet to something lower, like 12 to 15-foot height. Several community board also requested to increase the clustering height threshold from 25, 75 feet to something higher to be more restrictive, so that mechanical voids are distributed at even more, like, you know, higher height. On this aspect, DCP would like to note that there are more than a handful developments that needed spaces to accommodate their mechanical systems closer to the height of 25 feet, and we believe that those heights would be necessary for those buildings to be efficiently operable. And in addition to the clustering portion, cities own central body proposal, which is 100% of auto housing development in East Harlem, requires mechanical floors at a nine-story And there are many factors that contribute to a specific mechanical space configuration. These include flat elevation, required contextual base, mix of uses, and below-grade level conditions. The third point, there are a few committee board that requested us to increase the mixed-use building threshold from 25 feet, 25% to something higher, like 50%. The mechanical needs for commercial and the community facilities, once again, vary significantly, and they significantly differ from residential use mechanical space, and especially when a building contains, you know, a significant amount of non-residential floor space. So standardizing the mechanical volume of those non-residential uses could lead to unexpected So the third, well, fourth and fifth point, a number of committee boards requested us to increase the height limits of residential units and amenity spaces to be covered by our proposal, as well as unenclosed and covered space to be also included as part of our proposal. So on those notes, we would like to point out that generous floor-to-floor heights commonly seen in New York City's beloved historic buildings, including brownstone townhouses with 14-foot ceiling heights, mezzanine apartments with double-ceiling-height living spaces, and as well as grand entrance lobbies for larger residential buildings. And also, there are a number of unenclosed or covered spaces that contribute to enhancing New York City's quality of life, like the City Court Building, which has a few hundred feet tall space under the commercial building, which is being used as the entrance to subway, as well as Public Plaza to be enjoyed by the people walking in or working in the area. Finally, a number, three or four committee board requested us to expand the geographic applicability of our proposal, including central business districts, as well as R8 non-contextual districts. Central businesses districts usually have very specific use floor area and height-on-setback regulations, as well as they have very different build contexts. Given those differences, the city agreed to review the needs of residential towers in the CBDs, and we plan to have a separate recommendation by September. So this is the end of my presentation.
Questions? Commissioner Deloos.
I feel like we just had the post-review session before the, before the hearing.
Yes, yes, yes. So there'll be a number of, you know, concerned citizens, as well as professional community, like, you know, groups, practitioner groups would come out for the public hearing, and what we summarize here is only committee board recommendations.
Were there any community boards that were asked to comment that didn't?
I'm sorry?
Were there any community boards that were asked to comment that did not comment?
So I believe that Committee Board 10 in Harlem did not submit the recommendation yet.
Okay. And I'm assuming it might just be about timing, or I guess we'll see. Do you know what that's about? Why they didn't submit?
So we do not have the, you know, the detail of why we haven't received the recommendation yet. However, we will find out.
Okay. Great, thanks.
It may not resonate as an issue.
I'll note that there were varying degrees of detail in the community board reports. For example, a Bronx community board noted that it didn't have very significant impact, but they nonetheless supported it, and I quite appreciate it their taking the time to do that.
Just going back to Committee Board 10, they, we presented the information to them, and they just haven't submitted a resolution yet, but I think they still plan to.
Yes, Commissioner Ron Pershot.
Have you heard from Committee Board Two in Queens?
Committee Board?
Actually, that's, actually, that falls like City Court, Court Three, the one that we had, that's also, that's a C5, which is the equivalent to R9, right? So you haven't heard from?
Yes, so my understanding is that they met on this matter, and they have at least, like, a land use committee proposal, and I believe we are just waiting for them to submit the formal comment.
And obviously, we'll share with the commission as we receive any other correspondence from community boards. Commissioner 11.
Thank you, Kiyoshi. I have several questions, actually, maybe in the, in the post-hearing follow-up spirit that you've engaged with us today, which actually, I really appreciate. It's good to, you know, as I know we're going to hear a lot of this stuff in the hearing, it's good to have a little bit more elaboration about the staff's thinking, and I know we'll talk about it further in the real post-hearing follow-up, but I appreciate your offering that additional information. The Manhattan Borough President's office refers to a forthcoming follow-up action. Is that the one you just mentioned as intended for the fall?
So.
Something else?
Our, like, you know, we are committed to looking into central business districts by the end of the summer and to come up with a recommendation, and we.
We believe that that's what the Borough President was referring to.
Yeah. Okay. And just to clarify my own understanding of the zoning, we heard from Committee Board Five some comments about the 57th Street soft sites. Are those excluded because they're in the special midtown district? Why are those not covered by this?
Yes, so when we looked into West 57th Street situation, we have identified that that block between 57th and 58th Street is divided in the middle by midtown and the regular tower districts. And when we paid closer attention to those developments, we identified that most of the tower portions are actually happening within the regular tower district outside of midtown due to the height restriction within the midtown. So our citywide proposal would be addressing those, like, you know, split lock conditions, and whenever large towers happens on that block, the tower portion tend to be happening within the regular portion. So our proposal would be mostly addressing those tall.
Would cover those?
Yes.
Okay. But were the towers to happen on the 57th Street side of the block, they wouldn't because it's in the special midtown?
Yes, and the midtown has their own specific height-on-setback control.
Good. I'm beginning to figure this out. We, I believe, all received a letter from Rebny making a point that I expect they're going to make in the hearing, and so I'd be interested in staff's reaction, and that is that this is on an uncharacteristically fast timeline and did not include the consultation with professional organizations, particularly architects and engineers, that typically happens. Is there any additional information you'd like to give us on that point?
We've been reaching out to quite a few professional groups, including AIA, and, you know, those, you know, individual developers, as well as, like, you know, consultants who helped city to develop buildings like, you know, Central Body. So we've been reaching out to those professional communities, and we've been trying to make sure that all of their concerns are being addressed.
Were they consulted in the development of this proposal? Was their information part of your thinking?
Yes, I'll note that this has been long foreshadowed. It was, I believe, in April of 2018 that the mayor, or a little bit earlier, that the mayor committed us to coming forward with this proposal. We met extensively with the AIA, with representatives from Rebny, with individual consultants, in addition to doing our own research of all of the building permits that had been yanked, I believe, Kiyoshi, over the past 10 years.
Yes.
And we met with representatives of Rebny when they expressed concern that there were buildings with mechanical spaces that were not excessive but over 25 feet. The examples that they submitted were in central business districts and so are not covered by this proposal. That's part of our ongoing research now to determine what would be an appropriate, whether there would be an appropriate limitation on excessive mechanical voids in central business districts.
Okay. But the consultation you described happened before the?
Before the proposal was issued.
Good. And then if I might, and you don't have to answer this if you don't care to, but I was struck by one of the lines in Board Five's letter, which says, "Whereas CB5 is gravely concerned that DCP declared to us that their role is not to plan the city." You don't have to answer, but I'm wondering if you have any understanding of what that issue is, because it certainly is contrary to my understanding of what DCP, in fact, does.
Let me state for the record that it is our role to plan for the city. I'm wondering if that may have related to a comment about as-of-right building. But that's just speculation. Other questions? This one is certain to be a lively hearing, so we'll see it at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 12 on our agenda is a review of a city council modification for scope determination for the Batanza Six project in Bronx Community District One. The city council has proposed to modify the text amendment to exclude MIH option two. Staff believes that this modification is within scope.
And so I would ask for an assent by show of hands to send a letter to the city council letting them know that it is within scope. Okay, done.
Item 13 on our agenda is a review of a city council modification for scope determination for the 570 Fulton Street project in Brooklyn Community District Two. The city council proposes to modify the zoning text to prohibit Use Group Five uses from buildings that use the special permit that's created in that text. I'm sure all of you know that Use Group Five consists of hotels used primarily for transient occupancy. Staff believes that this modification is also in scope.
So I'll ask for the same assent by show of hands. Done.
Okay. Onto future votes. Staff have prepared reports for the consideration on March 13th for 2069 Bruckner Boulevard, the 460 Atlantic Avenue Childcare and Senior Centers, Urban Strategies Daycare Center, 1640 Flatbush Avenue rezoning. I believe that the only outstanding, there was that one question, Anthony, did you want to address it?
Yes, and there was a slide that we had with this.
Is it coming up? Okay.
Yes, so there was a question about the second floor, yes, here we go. So there was a question about the second floor retail, and so I just wanted to show on an image some of the thinking that went into this. So the proposed zoning district allows for two floors of retail, does not require it, but the developers, described in the public hearing, they had had consultation with tenants and felt comfortable with sufficient demand for a second floor of retail, and so that went into the thinking for mapping the C4 district. And we thought that was appropriate considering the location, so, you know, this is the area where we have Flatbush Avenue and Nostrand Avenue intersecting, and so, you know, with the adjacent mall, which is a three-story retail building with a lot of large floor-plate retailers and the transit access, and I would also point out, there are other destination retail buildings, you know, other than the mall in the area, so, yeah, we felt it was appropriate to map a C4 district in this location.
But again, emphasizing that it does not require the second floor to be retail. Yes, Commissioner, please.
On a slightly related note, I went back and I looked at where the Business Improvement District boundaries are, and this site falls outside of those boundaries, but will take on many of the characteristics of the retail area, so I'd like to note that, you know, either we need to be thinking about a contribution that they would make, you know, voluntarily, or potentially expansion at a future date of the bid boundaries.
Okay.
We'll pass it along to SBS. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Deloos.
Do we happen to know how many additional residential units could be developed if the second floor were residential instead of retail?
I don't have the number, but, you know, the building is proposed at, I believe, 114 units, so, you know, one additional floor would add some units to that total, but, yeah, it would add additional units to remove a floor of retail.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I personally would err on the other end, obviously, in this case, more residential.
Other comments? Brian?
Okay.
Thank you, Anthony.
Continuing on with the future votes, also for consideration, 245 East 53rd Street The Rupert Brewery URA garages. Everything, okay, I'm getting thumbs up, I like that. Also scheduled for decision on March 13th, 99 Seacrest Avenue, 93 Manny Avenue, 170 Edgewave Avenue, and 636 Howard Avenue. For post-hearing follow-ups, we have 1921 Atlantic Avenue for the questions. Oh, there was a Borough President's report, is that there? Yes.
Yeah.
So Karina is here to discuss the Borough President's report.
So the Borough President recommendation has been received, they voted, or they recommended approving with modifications in addition to a lot of the standard and recommendations that they typically provide, and then are outside the purview of the actions. The BP recommended providing more units at lower income bands and slightly more family-sized units than what has been proposed. And then in terms of the previous question from Commissioner Deloos about the industrial, the history of traditional industrial use here, there was, EDC was in talks with a plastic bag manufacturer in the early 2000s, and then in 2011, they had an RFP out for a year, but they only received one response during that time. Were there any other questions?
No, I think that was it, yeah. Moving on to 813 Sterling Place. Moving on to 813 Sterling Place, 370 New Lots Avenue Child Care Center, and then to discuss 1010 Pacific and 1050 Pacific, Jonah Rogoff and Winston Von Engel are here.
Sure.
Yeah, he's getting the presentation.
So we wanted to bring back this, these two applications to you and discuss how they, what the department's position was here in relation to the department's thinking about this area. So, continue. As you know, we've done a lot of work here in this area with the rezonings in the nearby area as well as just to the west here in Crown Heights West, and had a lot of interaction with the community. This is the entire presentation, actually, and we wanted to just keep it--
There's another one.
And there was another saved--
Do we have another one?
You should have a second one where we just zoom in on, actually, the department did some massings that showed to the commission what the, it's actually a comparison, the numbers between the two projects, and then some massings to show for 1010 Pacific Street, which is proposed at R7D, density, a, no, not quite.
No, no, this not, this one either.
And the difference between R7D and R7A, and that the department was recommending R7A to the commission as a modification. If we can't get that shortened, we could flip through to the end of the long presentation.
We can, maybe I'll just make a note--
Why don't we go ahead with the Queens?
With the Queens project follow-up.
Sure.
So actually, my understanding is that the Queens office is working with the applicant on a response to issues raised in the hearing and that we want to--
You're right that--
Work with them on the, at the next review session.
And we have plenty of time because it's not expired until 4/22.
But I think if there were any further thoughts or questions on that Queens project.
Yes, this is the 4715 34th Street. Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Eleven. Yeah, we had a memo with a letter of response from the applicant, and I am concerned about the existing uses on the out parcel. They indicated that there was like an upholstery store or a home decorating place that apparently is being treated as Use Group 16, which would then become non-conforming, but maybe they're not really Use Group 16. Anyway, I would, I am, I am concerned that rezoning those parcels, while it makes sensible land use planning sense, may create difficulties for that property owner that might be unintended. So we don't have to talk about it now, I just wanted to say--
Sure.
We're flagging that.
Appreciated their letter and still have a question mark in my mind about creating non-conformance.
We can add some, just go look at, do a little more digging at DOB--
Take a look.
--to see what's on the CVO.
Yeah, if it turns out that the existing uses are, would not be made non-conforming, then I'm fine with it. And I also appreciate their providing us with 360-degree renderings of the building.
Yeah.
Okay, it's coming up on the screen any second now. My screen is a few seconds ahead.
She goes faster, yes.
One more time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
We still have a question on Queens.
Well, my biggest point, I think, on the Queens was really about MIH Option II, given the local AMI levels, and I know that there was talk of restricted deck to achieve the same thing, and so I'm just wondering, why do that if we have another option available? We have Option One available.
So also, some of my intel is that the applicant is going to be speaking with the council member, and I think we might have more clarity on the MIH options after that discussion, so we can report back on that as well.
Yeah, there was enough other activity going on that we thought it made sense to let things shake out before coming back. Okay.
All right. So coming back to 1010 and 1050, as you know, there, these are two projects that are located just across the street from each other on Classen Avenue, and one is for R7D and C2 overlay, the other one is for an MX district for M14 and R7A. We prepared some massings. This is a view down for 1010 Pacific Street project, looking down Pacific Street, looking towards Pacific Park, that is, looking west. This is these existing conditions, and this is what the applicant's proposal would look like. This is R7D on the left side, and we also masked out what a similar building of that density, would we go back, would look like on the opposite side of the street. Pacific Street is only 70 feet wide, so it's a narrow street, technically speaking, and R7D districts were originally prepared for streets that are active retail corridors, like Fulton Street and Bedford Stuyvesant, and we've used it also on Myrtle Avenue and Bedford Stuyvesant. So in here, you see something that the department believes is much more appropriate, R7A district, which would allow a building to rise to 95 feet after setback, and I think we all have another view, this is a view, sort of a bird's eye view, looking down and west, and this is the applicant's proposal, and similar buildings that in R7D district would allow, just full disclosure, the dark gray shows what similar buildings might look like, they are not part of this rezoning area, but just for comparisons' sake. And now, R7A, and you can see that that is a much more, we believe, the department believes, that's a much more appropriate scale, and it's the same scale also that the applicants for 1050 Pacific Street are proposing. Right? And there you can see the comparisons between the two projects, and also the side-by-side recommendations by the community board and our recommendations for this area. I should note that the community board in both cases was comfortable with the R7A density, the one that we're proposing, and of course, there are differences between the community board and us about the ground floors, whether or not to require ground floor uses, their non-residential ground floor uses, and whether to limit those, restrict retail from those And one last slide to show just how clearly the development sites versus the rezoning area that the applicants both decided on the rezoning area for it in order to be a large rational boundary to encompass more, that it needed to be part of a clear, comprehensive plan or thinking, and rational, and in order to do so, it is important to note again the integrity of the proposed rezoning districts, their size, so not just be restricted to the development sites. And we're available for any questions you have or comments.
Commissioner Deloos.
So, Winston, can you just confirm that the R7A, bringing it down to R7A on the 1010, right, that that's consistent also with the conversations that the department has been having with the community board over the last few years for M-Crown overall?
I would say it's consistent with the conversations we've certainly had in terms of scale.
Right.
Yes.
That's what I mean by scale, yeah.
Yes, scale, as well as with the applicants. We had let the applicants know early on, and the chair noted at certification that we had concerns about the proposed density here. Yes.
And where it varies is really about whether to incentivize or require the ground floor uses, is that right?
That is correct. That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, could you go back to the CB8 recommendation?
Sure.
I'm curious, you know, they clearly are not interested in retail mid-block but would like other uses. Could you just speak to the department's rationale for the zoning designation you'd like to pursue, which would allow retail on the ground floor?
Sure.
Mid-block?
Sure, so we believe that non-residential ground floor uses are appropriate here, we just don't believe that requiring them in the mid-block areas is a good, is a good solution. We believe that, and we've discussed with the community about an incentive to encourage the provision of ground, of non-residential uses on the ground floors, and we've worked with the community to actually channel the requirement for non-residential ground floor use to either side of the mid-blocks, on, both on Grand as well as on Classen Avenue, right? There are varying lot sizes on, in these mid-blocks, and we're also concerned that on smaller lots, those smaller spaces may not be suitable for non-residential use and might prevent that buildings from occurring there.
So then for clarification, DCP's recommendation is that this could be either, I mean, either one or the other, that there's no requirement for--
We believe it's appropriate to have non-residential ground floors here, we welcome--
No, but we would allow residential, we would allow non-residential.
Yes, that's right.
Exactly. Thank you.
Commissioner Eleven.
So if we were to pursue on 1010, if we were to modify the application to have it be an R7A, we'd also include the, include the full area that is currently proposed over to whatever this, is that Classen?
To Classen.
Yes.
And include, and still include the overlay?
Yes, yes, no, the overlay is appropriate.
Okay, and the, and the full area still remains appropriate?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, last but certainly not least, Joe Helfordy is here to discuss the post-hearing on Bay Street.
Okay, my name is Joe Helfordy, Stett Island Office for the Department of City Planning, and we're here to provide a few items that are follow-up to our hearing that was held on February 27th. Without providing too much background onto the proposal, as you likely remember, the Bay Street corridor rezoning, or neighborhood plan, seeks to alter zoning and land use in these four strategic areas, rezonings on Bay Street and Canal Street, text amendments to the existing Special Stapleton Waterfront District, and looking at city-owned property as they can be, creators of housing and jobs in the area. So since our February 27th hearing, we've put together the following schedule to be able to provide additional clarification and follow-up to the commission. So today, we'll be focusing on the new Stapleton Waterfront, as well as some updates that were delivered by the Department of Environmental Protection regarding water and sewer, and the outcomes of follow-up to questions regarding schools and the SCA's plan in the area. Additional meetings will focus on the topics listed here today prior to your vote on the 22nd of April. So first, taking a look at the Stapleton Waterfront, I know there was a bit of back-and-forth at the public hearing regarding the status of this project, there were questions asked regarding the timeline for this development, and ultimately, the delineation between both privately developed and publicly open space, so we'd like to clarify some of that. So first, as an overview, this EDC-led development at Stapleton Waterfront is coming out of a 2006 CPC and City Council approval. It seeked to develop the former Naval Homeport site, which was then in city jurisdiction, to include the following three elements of the plan. So first, the development of mixed-use development along the waterfront, which is primarily focused on the city-owned parcels, which are located to the north and along the eastern boundaries of Front Street. Secondly, the master plan did set aside 12 acres of publicly accessible waterfront open space, and I have a slide where I can show you those in greater detail in a moment. And in addition to make, to making the development at Stapleton Waterfront feasible, EDC had also outlined an infrastructure improvement plan that focused on the alignment of Front Street and improvements to water and sewer infrastructure. So first, this is, we previously shared this slide with you, our pre-hearing presentation, an outline of the overall master plan, open space plan for the Stapleton Waterfront. So as you can see here, just a few key elements. The area that's shaded or kind of more opaque in the center, this is the existing phase of accessibly, public accessible waterfront open space. So there is currently development on Parcels B2 and B3, and the waterfront, an area that's labeled the Cove, are all currently publicly accessible. Areas to the north and south of this, adjacent to the northern and southern phases of the project, will also include public open space. So here in the southern portion, you can see that adjacent to the development parcels on B4 and B5, those parcels are divided by a visual corridor, which was mapped in the special district in 2006, provides connections from Front Street to the waterfront and the passive recreation trails along the water's edge. Further, in this case, to the, to the right or south in the open space, there's areas set aside for barbecue and picnic areas, a dog park, a playground, and a proposed maintenance and operations facility for the Department of Parks and Recreation, who will ultimately be overseeing and maintaining the waterfront. And similarly, to the north of the existing phase, so just off to the right of the image is the existing building at Erby, the waterfront open space includes this large plaza known as Pier Place, which provides direct connections from Front Street to the waterfront and the FDNY pier along the water's edge, as well as active recreation sports fields such as basketball and tennis and such. Further north, or moving to the left on our screen, this would be the continuation of the passive recreation areas that move north-south along the waterfront and follow the realigned portion of Front Street. So in order to facilitate this development, there was also a proposal for an increase in, for an infrastructure improvements to the area.
Before you go on, we did hear public testimony that the open space was not going to be publicly accessible. It will be, that was mistaken.
Thank you.
I mean, is that just primarily because folks are not realizing, so that, that esplanade is going to be entirely owned by the City of New York and maintained by the City of New York and developed by the City of New York? Go ahead, is that, whatever I misstated, please correct me.
So that's, that is true. The operation and maintenance budget will be as part of a negotiation with the developers of the addition parcels, but the, there is existing funding from the Housing Infrastructure Fund to build out and make, and develop that waterfront open space, which will be maintained by the Parks Department.
Commissioner Cirillo.
And I just want to add, I think where the confusion arose in doing some sort of follow-up homework on this, because it was confusing to me, too, it's not something I believe to be true, is that we need to distinguish, and this is a lot of the confusion, between the Stapleton waterfront development and the Bay Street corridor development, and what I believe was being, the concern that was being expressed was about getting to the waterfront from Bay Street, not from Front Street, and that is where there are some challenges, which, you know, obviously, I know we're only talking about the Stapleton piece of this right now, not, this is sort of the relevant, but not necessarily before us at the moment, but when we get to Bay Street, I think there are some questions about accessing, how people and development on Bay Street will ultimately get to Front Street, which ultimately can get you to the waterfront. And I say I think because that was not articulated specifically to me, but in discussions I had, I was kind of calling information, and there are actually some, there's advocacy out there about a lot of these pieces, about just having big building malls, but clearly there are upland access points in these developments to the water, but there's a different challenge getting from Bay to the water, and I think that's where there's a lot of confusion, which we can discuss further as, as the presentation goes on.
Sure, and just two points of clarification on how, you know, once this is all built out, I think that we'll see improved, an improvement. I think there's also a bit of misconception in the community, because right now, to access the existing portion of the esplanade that's built out, it's one connection, which is an upland connection and visual corridor, but it feels very much like you're entering a private driveway--
Correct.
--to the Erby development. The future phases to the north and south will be subject to PDC review, and you can see there's actually, I don't know how to use this, there's, you know, this piece here and this piece here that have direct access off Front Street, so I think in its entirety there will be a much greater, there will be much greater access from the street than there is today.
And just to provide a quick summary of some of the infrastructure work that's associated-- with the open space planning, EDC has identified approximately $45 million worth of infrastructure upgrades, which include a substantial increase to the water and storm sewer capacity to facilitate this development. Additionally, certain landscaping techniques are being taken into account with the design of the open space to increase impermeable areas and offer assistance for the drainage of stormwater. Front Street, which is the north-south connection, it's roughly parallel to Bay Street along the water's edge, is designed, is proposed to be realigned, and this was part of the 2006 City Map Amendment. Currently, the alignment has several conditions that are unsafe, and additionally, they bisect the development parcels that are to the north that are also subject to the tax amendment being proposed. So this alignment will create a more curved or irregular street and improve both vehicular and pedestrian safety and access to the waterfront esplanade. And lastly, as part of the realignment, there's substantial public realm and transportation improvement, not just to the waterfront edge, but also to Front Street itself, which is going to be designed to include two-way dedicated protected bike lanes, as well as sidewalks along the entirety of it. Currently, today, there are no sidewalks through the majority of Front Street. And additionally, at the CPC's request, EDC has submitted this conceptual timeline for how some of this infrastructure work may play out over time. So starting with the the top, this is work that is currently about to begin, and it involves the relocation of the DOT dock builders. So this is a Department of Transportation, very critical facility, who maintain docks and pierheads for both the Staten Island Ferry, as well as other areas of the city. They currently occupy space on Site B1 of Stapleton Waterfront, and as part of this effort, EDC is actually building them a new pier and facility further north on the waterfront, so that way it will prepare Site B1 for future development. Additionally, as this is ongoing, beginning sometime in mid, I believe that says quarter two of 2022, will begin the open space and infrastructure work that was previously outlined. So this work, as I mentioned, realigns the road, provides sewer and stormwater access, and is critical before being able to bring any development online at the area. So as this development, and sorry, one other point of clarification, as the infrastructure and open space package will be, are proposed to be constructed at the same time. So while the future development may not all occur in the same RFP cycle, the waterfront open space, realignment of the street, and the sewer infrastructure will all be occurring roughly from 2022, with the completion sometime around 2025. And as this is all ongoing, and development parcels become closer to being online or made available, EDC will begin the rollout of an RFP for each site as they become available. And again, just, we presented this at prehearing, but as a reminder, the portion of New Stapleton Waterfront here actually fits into a much larger EDC waterfront strategy, which involves potential improvements to the Tompkinsville esplanade, Lighthouse Point, and the developments in the St. George adjacent to the terminal here, which will ultimately create several miles of waterfront open space. Now, a quick update on water and sewer infrastructure. You know, at the time of public hearing, many questions were asked of our colleagues from the Department of Environmental Protection, and they've provided us a little bit of clarification. So first, we'd like to just reiterate the conclusions from our draft environmental impact statement, where regarding the water supply, it was analyzed that the proposed actions produce less than 1 million gallons of water per day, and thus do not have an adverse impact on the city's water supply. In general, the development proposed through the Bay Street corridor neighborhood plan is approximately 0.08% of New York City's overall daily water supply, and we anticipate no issues. Similarly, the wastewater treatment plant, currently the area is served by the Port Richmond Wastewater Treatment Plant, which currently processes about 25 million gallons per day on your average dry weather day, but has a design capacity of approximately 60 million gallons a day. It's, through our analysis, we determined that the proposed action would add less than 1 million gallons per day to this facility, which is well within its design capacity, and only increase its utilization by approximately 1.17%. And while the DEIS did not identify any impacts to water and storm sewer infrastructure, the city obviously has identified that there are areas that are worth improving upon, specifically as this is an older combined system. So DEP spoke a bit about this at the hearing, but has provided the additional clarification here, which is their commitment to continue to prioritize and investigate any quality-of-life complaints that they receive through 301 or elected officials, as well as continuing to prioritize the existing work orders they have for the area. In addition to this work, which is there, ongoing, as the rezoning process moves further through ULC, DEP is in the process of finalizing their amended drainage plan, and this is really the process that kicks off the kind of the framework for any future improvements, as has happened with other neighborhood studies before us. So DEP had prioritized getting this drainage plan in a, you know, a good place, so that way, as this process moves towards City Planning Commission's vote, and ultimately to City Council, they are more prepared to be able to commit to these investments in the future, the biggest of which involves the separation of these storm and wastewater sewer systems, which, again, in their current capacity, they are fine, yet it is outdated and antiquated infrastructure that the city sees as worth improving upon. Additionally, they would be proposing to monitor flow to be able to help refine the timing and the scope of these upgrades as this occurs. And the last point of clarification here is that as the development for Bay Street corridor neighborhood rezoning happens over time with our projected 2030 build year, DEP will continue to work with DDC and DOT to ensure that any of these improvements that are made are in coordination with larger infrastructure upgrades, such as improvements to streets or street widening.
I don't know how long it takes to do an ADP, but I'm just wondering if it identifies particular investments, whether or not, because I don't recall in other city-sponsored rezonings, this kind of discussion coming up quite to this detail, and I'm just wondering if this, if this particular study and plan identified need for additional investments, whether that's something that should be footnoted and contemplated as part of this process.
So this has been undertaken, although maybe not in the front seat for other studies. So the ADP is really what allows DEP to set the scope of those future improvements, and they've acknowledged that there are, there is, you know, a substantial need for increased capacity or spending in this, in this area. So they have been working to make sure that when, you know, if the rezoning in the neighborhood plan were to be approved, that the ADP is prepared so they can identify the scope of those future infrastructure improvements. But I believe, to the best of my knowledge, even through other neighborhood studies at the time, you know, those, those studies are actually still in that process. The city just felt it was important to prioritize this as the process moved forward.
Yeah, if I could just add, I think typically this is something that comes much later in the process, so it's something that typically comes after the City Planning Commission has, has looked at these. It's been a little bit different for every study, but in this case, we knew it was important to the community, we knew it was important to elected officials, and DEP actually accelerated the amended drainage plan process, which is why they're close to wrapping it up now, which is good. So they've undertaken that step to accelerate it and do it faster than they normally would, because normally they want to see what the outcome of the actual final zoning is going to look like to undertake their technical process. That said, what we're hearing from them is there is sufficient capacity in the system today for, you know, sort of the shorter-term development, and what this allows them to do is look at what the, the more long-term improvements that would be necessary would be, and for something like far rockaways, as I understand it, they're just now going through the process of implementing some of those projects. That's typically how this rolls out. This is the first and most important step, and it's allowing those conversations to continue.
I appreciate that, and I, and I think it's important to be thoughtful, and I'm just wondering, though, if there's, again, because the whole process hasn't been completed and not necessarily thinking about like what might be needed in the immediate near future, but more the medium and longer term, I'm just wondering if the department thought about other innovations, or if DEP thought about other innovations that would require property owners to retain more water on site or to have more permeable surfaces? Like, what are some of the innovative things that could ultimately, quite honestly, reduce some of the need in the future for the public investment, for the separation of the storm, you know, of the stormwater? So those are the kinds of things that I think would be helpful for us to think about now, especially with this level of private investment coming.
Sure, and we can look into that a little further, but I think that's certainly something that we, we all share the same objectives on, and I think there's ongoing work citywide on answering those kinds of questions, so absolutely.
We think about this a lot in my part of Brooklyn and Gowan, so.
Okay, and moving on from water and stormwater infrastructure into public schools. So since the public hearing, the department has received several questions regarding the existing public schools and our analysis of them for the DEIS, and I'd like to provide a little background on that now. So in general, within our DEIS and the subsequent tech memo that was issued prior to our prehearing review session, public schools are analyzed and the impact of the proposed actions on public schools. So on Staten Island, due to the low-density nature of the majority of the borough, our school sub-district for the North Shore that's analyzed is actually almost the entirety of Staten Island's North Shore, everything north of the expressway that generally follows the same boundaries as Community Board One. So within that sub-district, the DEIS and tech memo studied 20 elementary schools, seven intermediate schools, as well as eight high schools, which are located borough-wide in compliance with the SEAC technical manual. So within those schools that are, we've taken a closer look at, you can see here, columns to the left show existing conditions, both enrollment and utilization, where currently today, the greatest need is in elementary schools with approximately 1,900-seat deficit existing within the greater, larger sub-district today, as well as to the right, the columns identifying the no-action condition. So, you know, without the proposed action, this is the SCA's projected utilization for all three levels of school. Additionally, you know, intermediate schools show a surplus within the sub-district, and high schools as well as showing a deficit. So taking a closer look at the public schools that directly serve the rezoning areas, we can see here to the, to the left is the elementary schools, where currently three elementary schools were, the rezoning areas would be served by three elementary schools, which today have about 150-seat deficit, which is actually a slightly better utilization rate than the larger sub-district. And in addition to that deficit, however, there is currently 748 seats prepared to come online at Tarji Street, which is located less than a half mile from the southern boundary of the rezoning area, so it would be able to serve some of the students generated by the southern portion, as well as potential redistricting. And additionally, 132 seats are currently in design and annexed to another elementary school in the area. The rezoning area is also serviced by one intermediate school, which currently has nearly 400-seat surplus, as well as one high school, which is currently approximately a 775-seat deficit. However, throughout New York City, students may attend any public high school within the five boroughs that they meet the admission requirements for. And at the commission's request, provided the following, which is the outcome from our tech memo, where we looked at the impact on schools to demonstrate the need generated specifically by the rezoning. So you can see here, again, in the, in the top row, the elementary, one additional 716 elementary students are generated, and it continues to be the area of greatest need within the borough. Our actions being proposed today would increase the utilization by about 7%. So to address the school needs on the North Shore, the following slide lays out the kind of both immediate, short-term, and long-term strategies that we think will help to address this. So first and foremost, as I, as I mentioned before, there's currently about 750 seats coming online by 2022 in the area surrounding our rezoning, proposed rezonings, as well as 132 that are currently in design. So this would be enough to alleviate most of the immediate need within the area, as well allow for some future expansion. Additionally, with regard to high schools, Curtis High School, which is the public high school zone for our area, is in the process of getting a 309-seat expansion, and further south in the Mid-Island, Susan Wagner High School is currently underway with a 345-seat expansion as well. So in addition to these projects that are currently funded and in construction or design, as of November, the School Construction, yeah, School Construction Authority has released their five-year capital plan with a horizon of 2024. So within this capital plan, they've identified 1,776 additional elementary or intermediate seats for the larger sub-district. So as you can see here, the, or as I pointed out before, the greater need within the sub-district actually lies further west, since there are new schools that are either, you know, in construction right now or, or planned to be open in the immediate future, kind of in the eastern portion of the boundary next to our proposed rezonings. And additionally, the need that's generated by the Bay Street rezonings would, is not expected to materialize overnight, with our analysis horizon being 2030, which is beyond the scope of the current 2024 capital plan. And lastly, as we've mentioned before, the ATEX that was introduced proposed to accommodate up to 100,000 square feet of floor area for a elementary or intermediate school on Sites A or B1 of the Stapleton Waterfront. So the holding of this site and the exemption of floor area allows for the SCA and EDC to continue to analyze the site and the programmatic requirements and respond to the future growth, both at Stapleton Waterfront and adjacent to Bay Street, as the upgrades to infrastructure at Stapleton Waterfront come online, and more of the development that would be produced by the proposed rezoning or Stapleton Waterfront sites are also, you know, become realized. And just once again, this is the proposed, a conceptual massing for how that Stapleton Waterfront site may come together. So this exemption of 100,000 square feet of floor area is in effect offset by the proposed bulk modifications for height and setback through in the special district. This proposed school could potentially serve up to 750 elementary or intermediate school seats, which would be, in effect, the entirety of what's produced by this rezoning. And the timing for being able to construct this facility is dependent on both the overall need in the area, as well as the required infrastructure investment I outlined earlier. And that is all we have on these three topics. We will be back, as I mentioned before, to speak to other items at the following review session. Take any questions.
Joe, thank you so much. I'm gonna, I'll start with educate, since we did the education piece and not to go all the way back to the beginning and since it's fresh. First of all, I just want to thank you for all of this data and, and the explanation. Since DOE and SCA were not at the public hearing, this is really helpful in terms of information that's necessary to, really to help guide this process. Let me ask you a couple of questions. So in the, okay, I'll start with the, with maybe the simplest one. When we had the public hearing, the ATEX exemption for the school, we talked about the school not being defined, and not so much as a public school, intermediate school, or high school, but in addition, it wasn't defined as whether it was a public school or a private school or some other sort of educational facility. And I'm just wondering, based on the, the data that we have today, does it make sense to identify this as a potential public school, not to lose the opportunity in the, as the process grows, knowing that development will take time, and knowing that the future needs of the community may not be for another 10 years, and not knowing how long it takes SCA to actually fund these things and then build? Does it make sense to identify this as a potential public school so that we don't have, and again, all education is important, I'm not challenging that, but that we don't lose potentially this site for another educational facility and then deny the community the ability to have a location for a public school? As it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good question. I think, and we can take that back and look at how the zoning tech speaks to it. I don't want to speak for SCA, but I will say that because they are currently within their 2020 to 2024 plan, and they have the nearly 1,800 seats that they are prioritizing citing elsewhere, I just don't think that they're in a position to commit to saying we are building a school here. What they are doing is coordinating with EDC over the next four years as they're building out the infrastructure upgrades and preparing the site to say, these are our programmatic needs, this is what we need in terms of citing a school, so that EDC and SCA are coordinating on making sure that the site is held for them. And then the idea is when the need materializes in this area closer to 2030, so presumably in a subsequent capital plan, the site is ready and available for them to go. So I think it's certainly our intention and their intention that this will be a public school, it's just that we're not, because of where we are in the capital planning cycle, able to, to say conclusively that that's, that's what's happening.
Okay, so let me ask you something about the. So let, let me ask you something about the timing, SCA, as best as you can address these issues, it's another agency's information and process, but we're in the 20, the 2020 to 2024 is already established.
Right.
Given the timeline that we are provided for expansion projects or current school construction, taking out the high school numbers, because this, the SCA capital plan, the, the numbers you gave, the 1,776, are for elementary and intermediate school, not high school, correct? Are the Tarji Street numbers and the PS13 numbers growing out of the 2020 plan?
No. So they were.
So even though they're not till 2022, they're from the previous plan?
Correct. So, so those processes were initiated in the previous plan that expired this year, and so they were already in place. The 1,776 are new seats on top of those that are coming online. So it's, it's a substantial number of seats in the next five years coming online or planned to come online.
So having, it, it having been a long time since I was involved in this type of a process, what is the, what is the timeline for SCA based on this to report or release information regarding where in the plan through 2024 those seats come from?
Where we can cite them physically?
Uh huh.
Yeah. So I would say that that is a very active conversation. We've been working with them and helping to identify sites. They have a real estate team who's working on it. They are actively looking to secure sites and are looking at sites throughout the North Shore, again, with the focus further west, where there, there are, you know, elementary schools that are a little more overcrowded than the ones in this immediate area. So that is a very active process. I would say, you know, not to speak for them, but what I think that they would tell you is their goal is to do that as soon as possible. So their goal is to do that as soon as they can move on it. So they're just looking for sites at the moment, certainly within the five-year capital plan.
And can we, I guess I'll ask this question this way. Why are there no, based on the fact that the high school numbers look at the borough, or I guess, is it the borough they look at, or is it the, the district, which happens to be the borough in this case?
For high schools, they look boroughwide. The, the district is actually, essentially lines up with the Community Board district. So elementary and intermediate are the North Shore, and high school is boroughwide.
So in the number, what, are they not dealing with looking at the high school numbers because they see boroughwide? Someone can go from living in Stapleton to going to high school in Tottenville?
We can get more information on how the high school planning works, but I think there's a few things going on there. One is they are looking at over 300 seats being added to Curtis, and I know that that does not address the full need that's there today. And then I do think that they sort of reallocate capacity across what they consider the high school district, which for us, I understand, is the borough. So I think they're looking at capacity in other high schools where there may be capacity. There's also a significant number of people in the area who go off-borough for high school that isn't accounted for in our SEACR analysis. So I'm sure that's something SCA has, you know, when they work through their analysis in terms of what they actually need for high school capacity versus what SEACR is telling us. And then there are, you know, there's the, a technical high school in the area that has approximately 1,300 students, which is also not accounted for in our analysis. So there is a lot going on for schools that the SEACR story is not necessarily telling the full story, but I think there is a lot of thinking going into it, and we can get more information.
Okay. That, that would be very helpful. Thank you. I, go ahead. I have others, like, I'm going to jump to a different subject, but if anybody has education, I don't want to.
Okay. Then continue.
Okay. So I'm going back, just a couple of questions from the beginning, just kind of moving through here. Is there, okay, so let's talk about the public space access for a second, just to go back to that initial discussion, just to think this through a little bit further. If the real concern is about how, how people access the waterfront from Bay Street, not Front Street, what, if any, and this is where, I mean, I think, and I know we have transportation coming up in, on the 25th, and I'm hoping transportation doesn't just mean DOT, is it also, will the MT, will, will there be, like, how, how will we deal with these kinds of questions that really are MTA-related questions that go to the Staten Island Railroad and property they own, that is, that berms, that, you know, really creates the divider between the Stapleton waterfront and the Bay Street corridor? I'll ask the questions, but I, I hope at some point we get information from the owner of the property that perhaps needs to weigh in on this at some point. But do we know if there's been any thought or planning, perhaps, that exists on the MTA's part to create access where it may, and this perhaps could be a little DOT-related too, because there are streets that just end at the, but obviously go underneath the train? Is there any thought about how we can better connect Bay Street to Front Street? Because right now, and I'm guessing, the entire run from Hannah to the end of this district, to the end of the Bay Street corridor, maybe beyond the Bay Street corridor, actually, would be the first next opening to connect Bay Street to the waterfront? Because this ends at sand, and you can't go through sand, right? But I'm thinking there are a couple of uplands, in upland streets that are blocked off, or they hit the berm. Has there been any review or analysis done as to whether or not there can be some through-street opportunities there that don't currently exist?
So I think we looked in particular at two locations. One was an extension of Baltic Street, which is around the Western Beef today, and that is where the SAR is bermed. And that obviously provides or presents very difficult engineering and technical challenges and requires a lot of coordination with the MTA and, and has the ability to impact the SAR's operations. So I think that's a very sort of long-term coordination process, if we were to continue talking about that. They were open to discussing it, but I would say those conversations are moving slowly. There's other opportunities further down in the rezoning area where it is elevated and currently, what's this?
Just outside of the rezoning.
Just outside of the rezoning area, where it goes under. There is a connection under the SAR now, but it's gated. And so those conversations are things that we are having actively and that, you know, I don't know that they'll wrap up because of jurisdictional issues in the timeline of this process, but it's something that we continue to discuss.
You know, the, the interesting thing here is that while we're focused on, and it makes sense that we're focused on how, how does the community west of the water, you know, on the western side of, of the Staten Island Railway access the waterfront, right? It's a public space, how do you enjoy it? But there is a reverse impact to the Stapleton waterfront development accessing the Bay Street corridor, which, if built as designed, you know, is providing retail and, and services. And so this all goes to why Staten Islanders drive cars, right? So this, this plays into this, if the only access point for people on Bay or people on Front to get to one or the other major roads is to go all the way south or all the way north, we will significantly deter people from enjoying the neighborhood as one sort of neighborhood. So I, I put that out there. The other thing is, we keep referring to this area as transit-rich, right? This is a transit zone, it's a transit-rich area. The reality is, there are two train stops here. There's, which is, one is completely outside the, the district, the rezoning district, but if we're thinking of from 125 Edgewater all the way to the Ferry as sort of part of this waterfront, Clifton, right, at the, at the southern end, there's a train station. And then it's Tompkinsville, which is, you know, at the pool and where Cromwell used to be and Bay Street Landing. There is nothing, and Stapleton, smack in the middle. So I, the other question I would pose, if you were the MTA, is whether or not they had considered whether or not there are any other potential, maybe there's a design from 100 years ago, but is there any opportunities for creating additional connectivity where people are not, because there's big gaps in, in there to get off the train and then walk to the next, I mean, Tompkinsville is all the way and Clifton's all, Stapleton is really the only central station that I would guess most people would use, but it's a pretty big hike. So I just throw that out there as part of the transportation follow-up, because all these things are going to be why people will want to live there and why people would want to do business there, because people will be able to access them. The last thing we want to do is build a community on one side of the train and a community on the other side of the train. And that's, right now, without some other abilities to connect both sides of the train tracks, there are concerns there. And we can be actually undermining the future of the neighborhood.
And we can come back with more detailed information on, on sort of the MTA piece and the actual transportation pieces, but I do just want to say, in terms of connectivity to the waterfront and the feeling of connectivity, I think one of the things that we've heard is the perception that there aren't connections where there maybe are because of, you know, unsafe conditions under the rail. You heard people speaking about it at the hearing. And so one of the things that we are certainly working very actively with the other agencies on is plans to sort of improve those experiences, and we're hoping to have more information on that when we come back.
And I appreciate that, and I, I understand that, and I'm not surprised by that. I just know that the, the, the easiest way that people will deal with those challenges is to get in their car and then to drive around and then to park their car on Bay Street to get to Bay Street. Or if they want to go to the Urby for dinner, they're going to get in their car and they're going to drive all the way around and park the car. So at some point, part of this, the viewpoint of what this community could be is basically a little bit of the culture of the old and a lot of the culture of the new. And unless we really create the kind of neighborhoods that the new culture is used to, which is the reason you live in neighborhoods like this, is because you come down and there's the bar, and there's the restaurant, and there's the shopping, and there's the supermarket. If at the end of the day, there's no way to get to those things, people will avoid it. And, and, and the population we want to enjoy this and to experience it will not be the population we get. And so, anyway, that's.
I think what you're highlighting is a certain facet of chicken and egg under the current zoning. You're never going to be able to take steps towards that vision.
Yeah.
In the, as more people move, it creates more demand for the connections, for more service. And so it's part of why we're so excited about the rezoning, the neighborhood plan and rezoning proposal, is it is that, that first step on a 10, 20, 30-year reorientation of the neighborhood.
No, and I, I agree with that. I, I just, if, if getting the agencies that would be responsible for that vision and ultimately that reality to actually say there were things that they're thinking about, whether it's tomorrow or it's in 2025, that's helpful to the process, that there is a vision. Right now, I think there's a concern that when it comes to the transportation issues, it's, there's not a lot of vision going on. And I realize there are a lot of challenges, but vision is sometimes about ideas, not necessarily practicality, but it would be helpful to be thinking about what in the next 10 to 15 years this could be as, I mean, nothing's going up overnight, but it would be very helpful to think about what this could be with respect to transportation, especially when we're considering this as being a transit-rich neighborhood that still is limited in its richness. And we need to recognize that and come up with some ideas to do some things. But I, again, I know this is another agency's issues, but in the discussions you're having, it would be helpful to kind of get some of the feedback.
Sure. And to be clear, we've very much been having those conversations, so I don't, you know, we'll bring that information back.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to ask in the follow-up, on March 25th, I think is when you said we're going to focus on housing.
Yeah.
If we can specifically talk about investments and strategies around the displacement issues that were raised, in particular about the non-rent stabilized tenants, and in particular how, how those investments and strategies would affirmatively further fair housing on behalf of those vulnerable folks. That'd be great.
Thank you.
I believe that this concludes the New York City Planning Commission review session of Monday, March 11th, 2019, and the time is for 10:00 PM.